Welcome everybody to Town Board Work Session Tuesday July 16, 2019. First thing on our agenda is amendment to the fee schedule for special use permits. Question? Okay, next. Jill, we doing any amendments to the fee schedule? We just have to uh...
Sorry, it's a bunch of resolutions and there's a resolution.
Anybody have any objections?
So what did that...
Um, okay, so um, uh, Sabrina was asking that the uh planning application fee and zoning applications fee for special use permits, that we bring some consistency on into it? Basically, we're...
I was good with her suggestion.
Okay, so then next time we will...
I do have it tonight.
Oh, actually, you can go on for tonight.
Yeah, that's...
Okay. All right, good.
All right.
Um, fence local law, uh, decent had a question of...
Yeah, I got an email, yeah.
Right. Um, fence local law, where were all the...
Sure, so the fence local law, you uh hold the public hearing closed, you got comments from the planning board, the county planning board, they were both good with it. Uh, Tom and Sabrina took a look at it, they want to make one thing, one clarification, and so there's a new sentence added at the end of the local law. In essence, it addresses situation when you have a fence on top of the wall. So with respect to a fence on a wall, you know, typical border fence between properties, that fence on the wall is included of a maximum six foot height. For a fence on top of a retaining wall, the six, the fence on top of retaining wall can be six feet. So you'll have a retaining wall however high it is, and then six feet of fence, and that's for safety reasons, because you don't wanna have a twelve foot retaining wall and then say a two foot fence or no fence. So on top of a retaining wall, the code would allow you to have a six foot fence.
And that's consistent with what the county said was allowable?
It is, I don't know what the county said, but it's consistent with what we've seen in other municipalities, I don't recall what the county said.
That's in the package.
So that is the only change.
So it doesn't need to be re...
I don't see that it needs to be re-notices.
All right, so that revision is in the package?
That revision is in the packet, it's not ready for vote because it needs to be on the desk of the town board for ten days before you vote on, so... This is your first time seeing this, it'll be scheduled for your June third, July 30th meeting or vote.
Three of the meeting, perfect.
No need for re-note or referral.
Okay, so we're kicking that over, let me just save a vote.
So vote on July 30th.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we stay here.
It's just, we may just wanna make sure that it's okay, because this letter that we got from the, the county does not make that distinction about a retaining wall there.
Okay.
And it just says the height of effect of it on top of the wall would include the height of the wall, so.
Well, to me, there's a difference between a retaining wall and like a little stone wall.
I get it, I just wanna make, yeah, I mean, I agree, I just wanna make sure it's...
It's the grade, it's gonna be shiny.
Understood.
I probably can't live now, I'm gonna have that discussion with Tom.
And what is the definition of retaining wall basically, in some event back, I mean, somebody has made a determination who makes that the building inspector?
Building inspector.
Right, but, but the thing about a retaining wall versus the fence is that the retaining wall actually changes the grade and you measure from the grade up as opposed to...
Correct.
I, I follow. I'm okay with it. All right, so this is the fence public.
Part two changes.
So you just adjourn the, the hearing and then we...
You close the hearing, so what?
Right.
Just two vote, yep.
Okay. All right, that's good, great. Okay, proposed changes of the transition. So I've been in touch with Glenn. Rob, have you been picking with him as well?
Yeah, we didn't so much talk about the parting though.
Oh, okay. Um... It's a, I'll get there, sorry. So, um, looking at the train station, what Glenn had asked was that these handicap spots, which are the furthest north of the train station, closest to the, um, the bridge trestle, be relocated to where our current fifteen minute parking is, which is right opposite the, um, the elevator and access to the train station. Um, and give him, and mark, make these spots instead fifteen minutes parking.
Why does that matter?
He would like, um, there to be parking for his guys to come in, drive in here, uh, grab and go and leave. And...
But why couldn't it just stay where it was?
Sign number spot, why couldn't it just...
Um, it was his request. It doesn't make a difference, to me, this is actually probably better for handicap parking, because it's closer. Uh, I was just concerned because traditionally, you don't want people to cross the line of traffic.
Correct, and...
Like, awfully far away.
And that's where people pull up, and everyone goes to pick people up over here.
And people like trying.
Right, that's the issue, the vocal, exactly.
You're gonna have a lot of pushback. I don't see what the difference is if you wanna make a few of these newly proposed relocated spots, a few more of those fifteen minute parking, because I don't think they are now, there are only a few of them. I don't have a problem with that.
Now why don't...
You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna problem where people are gonna stage to pick up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big handicap.
Because yeah, it's gonna become, it's gonna be a nightmare.
That is, that is true, that people use those. Well, why don't we get rid of in that same row, at the end of that row, we have those nine thirty spots, we have like three spots that...
Two, it's only two.
It's two spots, but we could get rid of both those, and then add up.
Yeah.
There, 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 there's the far end, but they don't...
Where?
At the far end of here, two spots.
Right, and then the first one, you make that left, when you're making...
They're far, like, too far extended this around, they're like a year.
Well, I guess you're pushing everything down.
Yeah.
It's not parked until like nine thirty or something.
After nine, after nine thirty.
Right, but you're just pushing it down, you don't have to do it there.
But I know, you're pushing it down, but in other words, you're taking two from the top and getting with those two.
You just put it down. Yeah, I understand that, right, right, you're pushing it down, correct.
The working mom spots?
Yes.
Working mom spots. I get that spot also, no, I don't actually, I get the hybrids. Somebody asked me...
It's normal, because at nine thirty, you could, nine thirty you could park the hybrid spots in there though.
But there's no more left. I didn't realize the spots were there.
I'm joking, that's the, the legacy story about how the spots were, were created.
I know, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, right.
It's for people, yeah, we used to have staggered hours, yeah.
I didn't realize they were there, somebody asked me like literally a month ago, I'm like, what are you talking about?
Yeah, no, they're there, they're, yeah.
Oh, yeah. They've been there for years.
You cannot park there before the time, like, you will get ticket.
So what are these numbered spots here, seven, eight, nine, ten, one, two, three, four, five, six?
I was just trying to show where the spots twenty, ten, two hour parking, eight AM to five PM, and then...
Is she saying one, ten, two hour parking?
Currently, or that's the whole song?
Well, we would move it down, we currently have ten spots there, so I was just gonna shift them down to two hour parking, for people that wanna use the restaurant.
Sorry, so those spots today are what, or right here and then right over here?
But they're not all fifteen minute parking from...
So seven, eight, nine, ten is what today?
There, some of them are fifteen minute, we, we've got like...
No, seven, nine, ten are, are regular parking.
Two of them are seventeen minute.
Seven, eight, nine, ten are regular parking spots today, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, they're regular.
Yeah.
Yes.
Converting regular spots to spots for, for bubbles?
Yes.
Yes. No, it's two hour parking, so right now, we have, some of these are fifteen minute parking, I think we've got five of them.
Yeah, there are two.
And then the rest of them are two hour parking only, which is what we did for the Chases at their request, so that the people who wanted to pull into the restaurant had someplace to park.
Was it this many, it was ten?
Yeah.
So I would just as soon leave the handicap where they are and... We can take some of those two hour parking if they really want to and make another one fifteen minute parking, but...
To make another two, to get rid of those nine thirty spots.
One or two?
Yeah, I don't, I don't object to that pushing.
Get rid of those nine thirty.
Okay.
I think the issue, you have to tell them as well. And then keep the rest of the two hours line up this way to pick up.
You do.
I know, but what they're concerned is with during the day, that this is a very long distance for people to walk from here to here.
Yeah.
They, then it's fifteen minute handicap.
It's not a long distance.
It's not that long, it's not that long.
It's not.
I think, I think what they're, I think what they're saying is true, people use those spots to pick up.
It's not.
No, 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 they definitely do it at night, I mean, this is where everybody stages.
Yeah, me too. It's gonna be a problem, you're gonna, and everybody queues in here.
Okay, and if, and if you don't give them those spots, it's gonna clutter, it's gonna create, it's gonna create even more havoc.
Yeah.
People are gonna try to pull into them anyway and...
I think it's very dangerous situation.
He is concerned that he doesn't have enough parking.
I understand.
But he's not gonna get that.
His, he's...
No, I understand, but that doesn't...
But it's giving him the same park, number of parking, we're just not moving the handicap.
Yeah, but it has to do with position, so he's looking for spots closer to it where people can just grab and go.
Nothing, nothing is preventing us from readdressing this issue again down the road, if it turns out what he's saying is true, that it's not working, we can always come back and try to fidego and move, but I, I, I don't approve to get, just pardon me.
I agree.
I don't approve to make those in that semicircle handicap, it's, I think it'll be a dangerous situation.
I do too.
But it's, uh, working for Chappaqua Station now...
He claims that, that they have very little distance from that line.
But it's different, and it's different, it's a...
All right, that's simply not the case.
No, 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 it may, and now it may be different, it may be that, that the people that are coming to Chappaqua Station right now and eating breakfast there and having the, the breakfast crowd are commuters that are taking and just parking their annual, you know, spots, and they're walking in as opposed to moms at town after they bring their...
How they are, but it's people that come from lunch.
Or dads.
Whatever, then just taking, drop, people who drop their kids off or after not having eaten into the city, and that's the population that he's seeking to get.
People.
So he walked in, he wants to know what about these, I said I can't vote the ones that are closest to the train.
Let him demonstrate.
These are, um, the taxi, they're already contracted for a pickup.
Wait, I'm sorry, he's worried about people who go to the train late and not...
Not to the train late, he's worried about just a, a regular breakfast crowd.
He's gonna have like diner food, he's gonna have like real life and stuff, he's gonna want people that are going to work...
Yes.
Like, if you're coming at a ten o'clock, where are you gonna park?
You know, these spots will be, these spots will be available.
Those spots will be available, right.
The only thing I tried to explain to him before, which I don't know if he's picked up on yet, is that all of that under the bridge parking going back along Allen Place, you know, to...
Mm-hmm.
He was initially looking at that, but that was the week that there was, there was construction on that.
There's another construction.
Yeah, that, even along the bridge, it's all open, this is all open, then you have City Bank, it's all two hour, this is all virgin and two hour parking.
Instead of parallel.
It's two hour parking, correct?
Yeah.
This is all virgin and two hour parking, right. Three hour parking here, there's three hour parking here.
There's plenty of parking.
Yep, all along here.
And nobody parks under the bridge.
I, I think we should just...
No, they don't, that's always like, yeah.
Make those spots, those, switch it back, so the fifteen minute spots over there, maybe give them a couple more fifteen minute spots, but keep the handicap where they are. Because I think you're gonna have a problem with the, uh...
I think that's a good suggestion, actually, because I think the, the differentiating factor between him and the Chases is that fifteen minute piece.
Yeah.
If he's doing like egg sandwiches and coffees to go and stuff, he might get more fifteen minute.
Right.
So give him two more fifteen minute, get rid of the, those two nine thirty spots and just make those regular spots.
So get a couple more of those. Fifteen minute spots, and then move the handicap back, because I think it's gonna be a problem, and I think we all agree, it's gonna be a problem with the handicap for people that are picking up at, you know, five, six, seven o'clock at night.
Definitely.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, for crossing that traffic, it's gonna be...
Yeah.
Well, I'd say we just give them one for now.
But he'd have one ninety.
Those, those, those spots still get used, those nine thirty spots, yeah.
Yeah, but...
And our people will come in late.
There's no... Splitting difference at work.
We've been splitting the difference a lot lately.
It didn't work out last week, it didn't work out last week.
Okay, so Jill, you got it?
All right, moving the handicap spots back, we're getting rid of both ninety, nine thirty spots?
I, I personally think both, Jeremy thinks one, one and a half.
Christina is cringing real hard, she's the one who's gonna get a little bit...
We take one ten to ten, then we had a deal.
Well, first of all, we get rid of one, we gotta get rid of both, whether we give them both to him, we can't have one nine thirty spot.
No, we're not saying leaving one, you, you're getting, you're...
Why do we have nine thirty spots?
Because there are people who are supposed to stagger to take us, and so they end up parking all right, so it's...
No, no, it's about a half a dozen. There's like a half a dozen nine thirty spots at the end of that.
How many are there?
No, there's two.
No, there's two.
You're talking about at the end?
They're, they're handed like six of them.
No, you're wrong.
Right here, like right here.
Yes.
I, I don't want some like the water.
No, no, she's not, it's, it's like right here, right here.
You're talking about, you're talking about down here?
Like right, well, like right here.
No, no, here, in the very first circle.
At the end?
Here, like right here, in this first circle, like right here, right?
It's not the hybrid circle, the other circle, the inner circle.
Yeah, at the bottom, there's more than two nine thirty spots.
Yeah. Not all the way down there, looks like nine...
Oh my god, what, sure you wager on this?
It's, it's not, there are two.
It's two.
There's two.
I'll check it tomorrow.
Just listen to the women.
Nope.
And just agree with us.
I, we had this conversation too moments ago.
I know.
You're not his wife, you're not his wife.
You may or may not anyway.
Yeah, yeah, that is.
Still right, though.
Okay, um, tell me what are, what are we going with fifteen minute spots?
We'll check tomorrow, I'm willing to get, assuming this two, I'm willing to give both of them to him.
Um, Christina's here, just pull up the, the, how many?
If it was six, I would do four.
Wait, we're gonna, so is it fifteen minutes?
No, no, move across it.
Would you be able to work through the map and just tell me how many fifteen minute spots there are?
Just get rid of that.
There are more than two at the end.
Yeah.
The nine thirty?
On the east side, on the east side, there's more than two nine thirty spots, and then second row behind the, in front of the hybrids, there's more than two.
It's just on the website, yeah. Whatever's easier for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to go check, right?
Okay.
What are you doing?
What are you doing, yeah.
I wanna check this, because...
Oh, oh, we will, we will, we will be checking.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
We will be checking.
There's a lot of different areas.
I'm just trying to follow it, so, um, the, the fifteen minute spots, we're gonna, we're checking to see how many we currently have, I believe we have five.
Okay. Go check, let's see.
No, 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 no. Um, and then, like, what we had, like...
It's about a picture.
Wait, so how many fifteen minute spots are we gonna make?
Well, that's what I'm trying to see, how many we actually have. See the, do you have a map up?
Because I don't think you actually want that many fifteen minute spots, like, because people will hopefully wanna go and sit there also.
Yeah, yeah, he wanted, he wanted them for grab and go versus the two hour.
Well, we had our question, so...
The dark red on here, it says one, two, four in the, um, electric spots, the first row one, second row one, two, three, seven, that doesn't seem right, but...
There's four and then there's seven, they're all fifteen minutes?
That's what it says, it's a lot.
Two? That's more than two to me, seven more than two?
No, we're not throwing it to them.
We, we were talking about the fifteen minute spots.
I'm talking about the fifteen minute spots.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, seven, yeah.
Nine thirty, we were right.
Okay, oh, that's, oh, from the nine thirty.
I still stand by it.
I'm sure you do.
Good job, Jeremy.
So it's four on one side and seven on the other, and those are all fifteen minute?
There's two, two, the pink ones, two pink ones, and the merchant, it's two, to the left of the station.
Oh, yeah, we're not talking about that, we're talking about down here on the...
I think those are their spots, that we basically gave them, but...
Oh, we're talking about this?
Yeah. So we should do, we should do like a table of fifteen minute spots and two hour spots.
There's no, otherwise it's a different, yeah.
She, yeah, she's, she's got, we haven't interacted. Do, do you wanna just pull in the, do you have that map?
E.
Because we should do a...
The large one.
Do you wanna pull up on the laptop?
And how many two hour spots are there?
Yeah, can you just pull it up?
They all, no.
Put it up on screen?
Yeah, give me a second. Lauren will get it, just put it up on the screen. Yes, that's the one, how many fifteen minute spots are there on the inner?
I can't.
And how many two hour?
Can't, can't. This, of course, is not a touchscreen. Okay, she'll put it.
Careful, would you put up there?
Yes, this is three, four, five, so seven. So, and those are all fifteen, not even two hour, I really thought that they were fifteen minute between, it's fifteen minutes between
That's mine.
That's right.
the rush hour in the morning and then the evening, and then it's two hour.
These are the controversial spots right here.
Yeah.
They're by six, yeah. More than two.
Okay, so the red ones are, it, they're fifteen minute just during rush hour in the morning, and then afterwards, they are two hour.
It's not by six, it's up two hour.
So I'm sorry, these are controversial ones.
No.
No, it's up two.
They're here, yes, thank you, yes.
Yes.
I don't think so.
They don't even label.
I'm proud of you.
Those aren't even spots, those are trees I pointed to. Yeah, you're right.
Those two, right there.
Those two right there, shoot the two.
Right, right, right. Right, because it's the hybrid road.
Well, so we figured that out, but we've done nothing about the fifteen minute parking.
So the red ones are what?
The red ones say that they're, um, fifteen minute.
Fifteen, they're fifteen minute parking, just in the mo, no, 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 in the morning, like during rush hour, just to...
Not all ten, yeah. And in the, in the afternoon, four fifteen, so six, seven, that's it.
Right, and I, I actually wanted to change some of that time, because four fifteen is a little long in early side.
And then, that's it.
Yeah, that's...
Um, I was thinking from five to seven thirty PM.
That's, that's fine.
And I don't know that, that, that the morning is all that necessary, but maybe some of them we would leave for fifteen minutes, it's just for people picking up.
Yeah.
People coming off the train.
And dropping off in the morning, sometimes you might wanna pull in depending on who you're dropping off.
Yeah, usually people go on...
Or you pull and drop someone off, go in and get breakfast and...
You get a couple, yeah, that would just, okay, so I'm fine with that. So the only thing is, is that are we keeping all of those fifteen minute, or are we leaving some of them for two hour all the time so that people can go in?
I don't, to keep them all permanent fifteen minute?
Well, no, 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 so fifteen minute just in the morning, so from, we do part, so from six to like eight thirty, and then, which is what it currently is, and then from five to seven thirty,
So then, but Glenn would want it to... Yeah.
um, is fifteen minute, you know, that's the graph.
Because I think the question is that isn't if we're keeping it fifteen minute, I think the question is if we're keeping it two hours
And then...
during that middle of the day portion, what I think Glenn is saying is he'd like to take some of those spots that switch from fifteen minute to two hour and make them fifteen minute all day long.
Well, he can have all these spots fifteen minutes, and then maybe we give him two more two hour spots, we take the ones from over here, one minute.
That's a lot of just fifteen minute spots, yeah.
So does he want more two hour spots?
I think we should let, I think, let's see how it works out before we start the new order.
He wanted, wanted...
So fifteen minute person can park in a two hour spot.
He wanted like seven spots for fifteen minute along the train station for people to grab and go.
That's too much, it's too much.
Steak.
I think we should leave it, let's see how it works.
Because then nobody can go in and sit in there if it's only a fifteen minute spot.
Yeah, right.
So what...
If someone wants to actually sit there and eat, they can't do that.
Why don't, why don't we leave it as is, maybe give them a couple more two hour spots, get rid of the nine thirty spots, and then tell them what tweak it necessary as we go forward.
Yeah, I, I know, it's towards that modern emergency spots along.
Yeah, I think make the nine thirty spots regular spots, and then give him two more fifteen minute that convert to two hours.
Okay.
Two more and two hour, two hour.
To the two hours, okay, fine.
That's a good, that's a good plan.
And just remember, every, every tweak requires amending the local law, it's in the code.
Law, which is why I...
But you only have to amend it once.
Right, unless we for, tweak it, we gotta, we gotta schedule the public...
Yes, and, and let's be clear, so we're gonna, so right now, we've got eleven of these fifteen minutes slash two hour spots, right, eleven?
Yeah, we can't change it right now.
Okay. We got eleven of them, four and seven, so we'll put another two on the other side, on the inner side, something.
Yeah. Yes.
So it's gonna be thirteen on the beginning?
Lucky thirteen, yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we, we're gonna set that, um, set the...
Very easy.
Yeah.
Are you still on the nine thirty?
The nine thirty spot's gonna be a...
There's more than two there.
So if that's good...
I think I saw them too, I'm not willing to...
No, well, come on, share with me, Rob.
I'm willing to admit, no, I'm not sure.
Share with me.
I mean, it's up to someone, so...
Please file beans.
That's all we do.
I didn't look very quickly, I'm willing to go on and look, I did think they wanted to choose. I don't trust you.
We needed to have a good divided vote, so why don't we...
Okay, good.
I told you before, I'm a Hollis proxy, I like two votes.
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do it for, we'll change it, the, um, the law in August, August thirteenth, and then we can do it the same day, and that's it, okay?
Okay.
All right, so authorization to set a public hearing will be on the thirtieth, the, um, public hearing will be on the thirteenth, and hopefully we can approve it that night.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe what we'll do is put the temporary signs over where we're changing them, we can't take it, but we'll at least start giving the people notifications that, uh, they're going to be fifteen minutes slash two hour spots.
Excellent, okay.
We'll make copies of the signs that are up there now, and just temporarily post them, okay?
Yes.
Okay, construction updates?
So, so... Um, sorry.
Another, sucks.
Okay, so I lost my public page.
We don't have a page.
Um, there's no, what are we talking about?
No, 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 it was, it was, it was just a poll.
It's an update. Oh.
It was just the discussion about the, the poll, and so the, um, the, that, well, let's see, the, the good news is, is that we, um, that, uh,
Oh. I'm so happy about it.
John Caswick came up with a pretty brilliant idea and was able to change some of the, um, drainage at the corner of George's Men Shop, so we do believe that we're going to be able to use the traffic pole that we currently have, put it, it's basically going to be in the same spot, DOT would like to take a look at it again, so Joe Milleney from, uh, Lulu Joe, who's our traffic, um, I'm sorry, from Stan Schwartz, who's our traffic consultant, um, is going to be resubmitting, uh, those plans to the state as of, uh, release by Monday, and then the state wants to take a look at it. It's anybody's guess, uh, we're just hoping it's less than the seven months it takes us to re-fabricate the pole, so we're pretty happy about that, so that's, that's our update, so, yeah.
Yeah, we're very happy about that, that's really good news.
It's really good news.
Sorry.
You know, I, when I see it in the ground, I will believe it, it was a thing.
Okay. We need some wins, let's take it.
Yeah.
Right, absolutely, positively. Okay, water mains, this is from Jen Gray.
Each twenty.
I like this page number, now it's so good.
Very sophisticated.
I did them too, right?
Yeah, really helpful.
Okay, so just got the...
Yep, so there was a, a, an approved subdivision, as part of the subdivision, they're putting water mains in, there was an agreement for easements previously recorded during the fall. The old work, they had to make modifications, they had to modify the easement agreement, so this agreement would just be authorizing a modification agreement for the carry home subdivision. Once they put the pipes in, it would then come back to the town board for dedication, but right now, we're just modifying the agreement to reflect the actual Asplum locations. Okay.
Thanks.
Uh, next is fuel tank replacement project, uh, as the board is aware, we currently have buried fuel tanks at DPW, we're seeking to take and relocate them above ground. Uh, and this is a request to solicit engineering services for that project. We're being proactive, we're not the, so far no problems, but we're trying to remove them before they were. Yes, uh, electric shuttles, that's in the green.
Right, so we're, we're...
Workshop has a number of occasions, please to report that, uh, Etche has signed off on the final form of the agreement, there is no further modification to it, so it is now ready for the town board approval.
Yeah.
Yes? Checking things off left and right tonight.
It's okay.
Maybe we'll start it all this first, we'll see. Is it going, uh...
Good, so that'll be on for, uh, action tonight, we may have a charting session, right?
Actually, I think they were having a short night, they may have a charting session, right?
Um, we physically have, um, so we physically have one, which is like this pole.
Oh, they have to get it from us, they know where they're gonna install it, they just have to get it from us. By the way, you're letting Westchester still interest, they're still emailing me.
Oh, I, okay.
Anybody else have some questions?
All right. Well, it would be great if you could also get hold of them, just... Yes. Off-line conversation.
Excuse me?
Two-minute recess?
Two-minute recess?
Okay.
All right, it's only two minutes.
Okay, uh, yes, so moved.
All right, so, um, yeah.
Poll it favor. Poll it favor.
All right.
Hi.
What, but does that have to do with the...
Yeah, go ahead, move.
All right, here, come back, everybody.
There are a couple more seats over here.
There's only seats, we don't bite.
There's more seats, guys, in the first row, if anyone wants to...
All right, so, uh, we're back.
I don't know, they, they clearly don't wanna sit next to you.
So... Welcome everybody, town board meeting of July, uh, sixteen, two thousand nineteen, the startup is announced, we're to Chappaqua sidewalk sale this week. Merchants throughout Chappaqua wanting to bargain, due to construction, many merchants are holding their sales inside the stores, please support our merchants always and especially during construction. Summer concert series, a concert tomorrow night is Rebecca Haviland and Whiskey Heart, they are an American country band. Uh, let's see, uh, downtown Chappaqua rezoning, join the discussion by rezoning the Chappaqua Hamlet July twenty-third, next Tuesday. There are two sessions, you can attend either one, two to four, and six to eight, right here at Newcastle Town Hall. Newcastle Day at Playland is July thirty-first, and, uh, basically, uh, with proof of ID, each resident receive discount coupons when they arrive at the park by going at the Fountain Plaza Administration Building. Discounts include one free mini golf entry, one, two for one ride emissions, one free beach or pool admission, a dollar off one food value meal, and a five hour discount for parking and a return visit. With all those discounts and all your plus two, that's a thousand bucks, just kidding. Uh, let's see, uh, so as far as, that was the announcement, now onto Zufa's report. Uh, we have a temporary stop sign at the corner of King and Green Lake, the traffic light will be coming, um, hopefully September. Famous last words, but these stop signs are temporary, I said it, I posted on Facebook, it was there, but these stop signs are temporary, and, uh, it just has to do with the, uh, line of sights, sight lines and, uh, with the construction, just better have the stop signs for now. Um, they are, however, installing pedestrian poles, they're starting those installations, they're installing one of the, there's gonna be five total. There's gonna, they're starting installation, the one by Starbucks, North Count, the country Sotheby's, and one by George's Men Shop, those are the first three ones that are going in, those are gonna push the button and the pedestrians can cross. Um, so that's gonna be in conjunction with the, um, with the traffic light, okay? Paving on one seventeen, that started last week, and they still hope to be done by the end of the month. Let's see, congratulations to Rob Fleisch, the new vice president of Westchester Airport Advisory Board. As you all know, in Newcastle, Rob is passionate about this issue and his work ethic is second to none, the Westchester Airport Advisory Board recognizes that as well, thank you, Rob, for your commitment, service toward town. Uh, so now we can talk about the leaf blower environmental protection law, we have new legislation, we'll be talking about it, Ren is redoing the presentation. And, uh, I guess that's it for now. Jill, anything, uh, nice job?
Uh, yeah, just, um, a road closure, uh, Croton Lake Road, so, um, Asplum and Con Ed are removing a number of large trees along Croton Lake Road between Lake Road and Seth Canyon Drive. Next week, uh, actually the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. Um, it'll require a total road closure from nine AM to four PM each day, Monday to Friday, large cranes are required to remove the trees safely. Uh, message boards have been placed along the roads to alert residents and travelers, uh, of the planned work, uh, there will be detour signs, so travelers will just have to follow them, and we apologize for being convenient, it's actually the only time of the year for us to be able to take care of this work. Uh, just a reminder, town hall will be closed to the public on Wednesday, July thirty-first for records retention day, our next town board meeting is July thirtieth. Uh, town staff will be participating in de-escalation training this Thursday and next Friday, I wanna thank Lieutenant Pasmino for coordinating this mandatory training with the staff. Any, any town board members wanna go?
Yeah.
Uh, and over the next week or two, fire escape windows are being installed on the second floor of town hall.
Should we show this as exhibit one?
Yeah, exhibit one, thank you.
Okay. Where'd the ring go? Hey, there you are.
There I am. I didn't run away. So, I'll, I'll go there.
John, there are seats in the front.
Sorry, guys, I didn't realize that it would be so crowded today.
Okay, so I, um...
I was about to say, I'm sorry they were in this room, there's a planning board meeting that's going on in the other room, we have no choice. I don't have that many meetings, what's that, Joe?
You don't outrank them? You don't outrank the planning board?
We don't.
Is anyone outside, yeah, we do have seats, so...
There are seats right here, people should come sit.
We've got three, three more seats on the front, please.
Right here for the front, or...
Well, according to ID, that's only two.
Well, people don't realize I'm r- rapping in this room every other week. You know.
De-escalation training.
I'm trying to work in here.
All right, so here we go, favorite topic, leaf blower legislation.
Okay, and, uh, I will give you a short presentation tonight, we've gone through a lot in the last few times we've met, so I'm not gonna reiterate the...
We've gone through a lot in the last few times we've met, so I'm not gonna reiterate the main reasons why we need to have this legislation. I'm not gonna go over the fact that, I'm not bringing in any experts tonight. I'm really just gonna make this a very short presentation about basically what the changes that have, or what has occurred so far and then the changes that we're suggesting in the legislation that has come about by all of the meetings. So just to give you a brief executive summary, the SAB has been conducting research on leaf blowers for over two years now. I don't wanna know that, mine is before my grandson was born, and he just had his two year old birthday, so I can tell you all that. SAB has been submitted to the town or local ordinance that reduces the ill effects of using leaf blowers. Uh, we've received many comments from people that were both for and against. And we did, we then held some listening meetings with a variety of stakeholders to find out what the main issues were and see if we can find a way to come to a compromise that makes everybody happy. So now the SAB is proposing some changes to the, to the legislation that we last presented. Um, and from all of that, we also had a, or the town board members had a fact finding meeting at Austining Lawn Mower where the, where we've come up with some more of the information that we needed for this presentation. So as I said, this is gonna be pretty short. Uh, here's what the revised legislation looks like as of today. You will notice that there are some changes here. The changes here deal with the fact that exemptions have changed. So instead of there being an exemption for individual groups, the exemption is now gonna apply to anyone with a lot size of ten acres or more. We've also introduced a noise restriction to the legislation. And the noise restriction basically says that any motorized leaf blower, whether it be gas or electric, needs to run at seventy DPA or less, according to industry standards, which is like fifty feet or something like that. Fifty feet, okay, thank you. Um, and then the other, the other part of it is there's a slight change in the timeframes of things can be used that you can use a blower of any sort. And that is the blower on Sundays and holidays is limited to nine AM to four PM. Otherwise, it's Monday through Friday, eight AM to eight PM, and nine AM to eight PM on Saturdays.
Rand, I just wanna correct you on one thing, if you can go back to previous slide.
Sure.
What did I miss?
We have the dates wrong on this slide.
I missed that.
So this says May fifteen through September fifteen. Um, and as per your recommendations back in April, we're gonna switch that to June first to September thirtieth.
Very good.
Which is consistent with the effective date of start, too, which would be June third, June first of twenty twenty?
The local.
And you can see that on this one, I got it right, so my inconsistencies, I apologize. So the summary of the changes that I just went over and why, the exemptions, the seasonal restriction of the use of gas, how it blows shall not apply to the use of anyone with a lot size of under ten acres or ten acres and above, is now exempt. Why do we think that's a better way to do it than the way we were doing it before? Because the exemption of ten acre lots, we simplified the exemption and we afford residents the same consideration as commercial property if you have a large property that you need to maintain. So we're not gonna be able to saying to people, just because your property is large, you're gonna have to use electric when the current technology might not be able to support the use of battery powered blowers on ten acre or more or greater lot sizes. The noise restriction is coming about because by requiring, by regulating noise levels for leaf blowers, we're encouraging a shift towards more environmentally friendly machines and creating year round solutions. It was the way to try to address the, the fact that people are saying that the newer blowers are quieter and less polluted. So if that's the case, then fine, in the off season, let me not say off season, in the winter months, um, you'll still be restricted by to use something that has a seventy DPA or lower output level. Um, and in the summer, in the summer months, if you have that ten acre lot exemption, you can use a ten B DPA or lower blower. And then the last ones I talked about was the hours, we really put in here, originally the hours on, I believe the existing noise ordinance, ordinance says till sundown. We felt that that wasn't definitive enough, so we set sundown time to be eight PM all year during the summer months and five PM during the winter months. And then we also decided that it might be best to give some people that wanna have usage of their backyard on a Sunday or a holiday, that exclusive usage without noise, so we're restricting that to four PM. Any questions?
I don't know if it's a question, but I, the ten acre exemption. First of all, how many ten acre lots are clearing ten acres? Probably not that many, I would assume, and maybe I'm wrong. Though I know, I know there are many families that may have one or two acres, but into usable spaces, not in a hill or a mountain, for lack of a better term, or you may have a half acre, for example, of usable space. But generally speaking, you know, it should be, and I think someone once said it before, and I've said it, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If you're gonna exempt, exempt, if you're not, why should someone who's got a quarter of an acre or a half an acre be burdened, if you wanna call it a burden, or feel like it's a burden, whether it is or it isn't, but to a certain extent, there will be a burden. But someone who potentially has a bigger lot, better finances, doesn't have to. So it just.
Well, and to add to that, arguably, somebody who's used, I'm agreeing with you. Arguably, somebody who has a smaller lot, a quarter acre, is gonna be using their leaf blower for significantly less time than somebody with a ten acre lot, even though maybe all the ten acres isn't utilized, but I don't know that, I'm not going around to confirm that and I can't tell people they can't clear their property.
But that's the point, that's the point, they're gonna be using it for less time, which means the electric blower actually can, can do the job where an electric blower can't do the job for ten acres.
But if, if the point is noise pollution and air pollution and other types of environmental issues, you actually would want to encourage someone to not use it as long, which would then pull in the ten acre.
Right, but also when you think about the noise issue, if you have a ten acre lot, your neighbors are not as close to you. You think about the particles, your neighbors are also not as close to you. The fact is, the technol-
You know, that's not necessarily true, you could be using it right on the edge of your property, I mean, there's.
True, and you could be, but you're probably not, but the, the fact is that you're, you can have a lot of woods in that situation. But the fact is the technology is just not there. I mean, the technology is not there for these large, these guys, what these landscapers can tell you, that these, you're gonna wind up having to buy eight battery packs. You're gonna have to wind up buying eight chargers for them, because they're gonna need to be charged after each job. These guys are gonna, what they're gonna do is they're gonna roll a freaking generator off their truck and just use the generator. Instead of, instead of bringing eight batteries, that's what they're gonna, that's what's gonna happen.
I mean, for me.
That's what we've heard from people.
For me, the reason that I can get behind this is the sort of second half of the rationale there, which is affording residents the same consideration as commercial property. So we had already conceded to the exemptions that had been requested by the school district, which I think shows that.
I didn't, I don't think we all did.
We included it in the, in several of the most recent drafts.
It was in the draft, but we never.
Okay, we didn't vote, we have to vote it on it.
We have to workshop it.
Oh, we've had lots of them.
To workshop, we've been workshopping this for a year and a half.
We have not sat down in a, in a work session and do that, we never have.
So, my point though, is that we had, we had already introduced into the legislation the exemptions that were requested by the school district and by the country clubs and by the homeowners associations. And when we were already going to be including those exemptions for ten plus acre lots, it made sense to me to make that same consideration for residents.
Lisa, we would love to eliminate blowers totally, but then, after many conversations on working sessions, that didn't seem realistic. So we're looking for, we're looking for a realistic way to get there.
I know, I just have a real problem treating people disparadely.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
I have a real problem treating people differently. Why should a resident that has a large lot be allowed to do this when a resident who has a smaller lot can't?
It's not, it's not the resident, it's not the resident.
I just don't think that's right. But it is the residence, and it's, I, I mean, I think a lot of the.
It's a piece of property.
Commercial properties don't need an exemption either, frankly.
You're, you're focusing on the resident, you're focusing on the resident, we're focusing on the size of the property. Whether it's, whether it's a resident who owns it, God bless them, or if it's a commercial property owner. The bottom line is that the electric blowers are not adequate for large lots. I personally don't care who owns it. It comes down to the fact that just the technology is not there. But a large lots.
It might need a future. Right, and, and.
And then we'll change.
Right, and we'll change, exactly. And to answer Jeremy's question, Jeremy's question about, well, if I have ten acres, I'm not manicuring ten acres, I'm not owning ten acres, I probably really only have an acre that I have to manicure and like. We find in the conversations we've had, is though in most of those larger lots, what they're really trying to do is maintain a driveway. And the driveway is a long driveway typically out of the property. And for that, they really, their solution's gonna be, it's gonna need to have an electric, I mean, a gas blower, they'll take care of that. It's not just that they have ten acres to manicure.
But wait, is their driveway ten acres long?
No, that's.
Because somebody who has nine acres has to abide by this law. So unless they have a ten acre long driveway, that doesn't make sense.
Well, there's.
You guys read a lot of something.
It's hard to make a regis- legislation based upon the length of a driveway. You can, what's, what's, what's in the public domain is the size of the acre.
And a lot of these larger lots are commercial properties, so arguably, they are actually gonna be blowing their entire property.
Yes.
That's the same with the schools, I mean, the schools, we're not giving the schools an exemption just because, you know, we wanna take care of the schools. We're giving the schools, which we've heard from them, that it's just, it's not gonna be possible to use electric blowers on that size property.
Between, I mean, it's in the summer too.
Yeah, well, that's the summary, right? This is only for the summer.
But it's no kids at school?
Right, when there's not as great, some of their fields we use, but not all of them. And frankly, I mean, I was at the school the other day, I saw them blowing the parking lot, nobody was there. There was no reason for them to be blowing the parking lot and taking the grass clippings off the parking lot.
So are you suggesting instead that we get rid of all exemptions?
I think we should get rid of all exemptions.
Okay, so before we get rid of all exemptions, um, because there have been changes on this and I didn't have an opportunity to bounce it by DPW and Recreation, but one thing I will raise with you is that paving operations, regular paving operations are not exempted. We can't.
That's true.
That's an issue, we can't do our.
No, no, paving should be exempted, and after a storm should be exempted.
They, they, they.
No.
You took them, you took them out.
It was taken out.
Oh, okay.
We didn't take them out.
But that is, I didn't take them out.
Paving operations, snow removal, water main break repairs, obviously snow removal, that, but paving operations, pothole patching.
Okay, so that's what mistakes.
Water, yeah, water making.
But that should be out, I mean, an exemption.
Yeah, that, that.
Before we, you know, get any further, I think we're sure that you were.
That's not merely blowing clippings, it's a lot more burdensome, I said, that's not merely blowing, blowing clippings, it's a lot more burdensome.
No, but I just.
Or requires a stronger.
Right, so when we took an exemption.
But then it would also be covered over number, number four.
No, because this is emergency.
That's only for emergency?
Yeah, this is during things, during a period not to exceed seven days, or after significant storm events or other emergency circumstances. Paving is an emergency. I mean, I wouldn't classify that, that's, this is routine paving, that's good.
Oh, you have it, Joe?
Um, pothole patching is not emergency operation.
Where you have to do a lot of can-am, but you need to.
Well, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of the exemptions based on the current technology. We need, we need exemptions based on speaking to the, hearing from the landscapers, speaking to Vinnie, making the field trip, dusting lawnmowers. I feel like we need exemption because the technology for electric blowers is not there yet for the, for the duration that it has to be used. That's, that's my.
So on the exemption, there was some wording in there that covered what you said. I just wanna make sure that wording would still include if a resident is having their driveway redone.
Yeah, all that was taken out.
Right, so, but when you put it back in, make sure it would also not just apply to.
Yeah, public or private.
Okay, well, that's, I just wanna make sure that stays in.
Yeah.
So, can we actually, can we push ahead to the, the next?
Sure.
Can I ask a question? Are there any planned developments within the town of Newcastle that are gonna fall within the exemption of ten acres or more? Any planned residential communities?
These village, how many acres is that?
So Riverwoods would be exempt from this? Is that true?
Old Farm Lake.
Old Farm Lake.
Yeah, probably, Old Farm Lake, there's a lot of these.
It's uh, Appicloes, not Appicloes. I, I don't think random farms.
Random farms must be.
No, they have a homeowner association, but that's not, uh, they're all individually owned, they're all, they.
I'll say Old Farm Lake.
Um, just before we skip this, can I ask just one question on the time?
Sure.
Why did we increase the time in the summer, like on Saturdays, I, I know there's sunrise, sunset, but why? If we're saying we want people to enjoy their property in the summer when they're out more, why are we allowing them to use them until eight PM instead of the five PM in the winter?
The original noise ordinance said sunset, so we just wanted to put a timeframe on it.
I mean, that seems counterintuitive.
Because you're a lot more likely to be outside and.
You're more likely to be outside in the summer, barbecuing, that's when it's gonna annoy people.
Well, part of the consideration was somebody coming home from work and wanting to maintain their property. So they're gonna get home, it's gonna be five, six o'clock, they're gonna start. In the summertime, what time are they gonna go to? We don't wanna make it prohibitive for a resident to maintain his own parking lot.
But, but what happens in the winter? It's just out of luck.
In the winter, you really shouldn't be needing gas blowers to blow things.
So the winter, it's only to five PM?
Right, that's what I'm saying, why isn't it?
Because it gets darker, because they have to.
Push it to be dark, not by five.
It's insane.
Start earlier.
No, I know that, but if you want, but getting darker earlier has nothing to do with when you're getting home from work necessarily, or.
But Lisa, if somebody is coming home from work and just.
For the enjoyment of your property.
Yeah, the winter is not gonna be made to.
No, no, my point is, maybe we wanna cut back on those hours a little bit in the summer. If the point was, I heard from a lot of residents, they don't want when they're barbecuing, they have friends over on a Saturday night in the summer, to be hearing their neighbor with a blower at eight o'clock at night. So maybe we can push that back on Saturdays as well, make it a little earlier.
I, I'm more than happy to entertain that.
I, I support that.
Well, well, till eight o'clock on Saturdays is a little late, to be honest with you, I agree with that.
I, I would match it up to five.
Monday through Friday is different. Saturday, I, I actually, I, I don't disagree with that.
I would push that back to five as much.
So you want it Saturday to four PM or five PM?
I think five PM is reasonable for Saturday.
Five, same as the winter.
I think if somebody's blowing their driveway, it's, blowing their lawn at seven thirty on a Saturday night, it's, it's not right.
Right, okay. Can I go on? So the other part of it, and this was, you know, somewhat brought up before, about changing the attitudes and getting to the point where we can start to look at using less invasive devices to maintain property. We've come up with three things, and these really have been on previous slide decks as well, since we've been discussing this from the SAB. These will be training programs and trade-in programs that we will be working with and encouraging to help move, make the transition from where we are now to the new legislation, one that is doable and workable. So establish a trade-in program or other incentive program. This has been done in many of the cities, is working with the manufacturers typically. Um, I believe Austining Lawn Mower would be interested in being part of this program as well, but I'm not gonna talk for them. But there'll be some type of a trade-in program or a discount program. Sustainable Westchester was looking to do it a year ago. I had a conversation with them today, and they're very happy to entertain it again, again, of support.
When you say trade-in program, incentive program, are you referring solely to in a private, of a private partnership with private landowners or involving local government?
This is not involving local, local government. We didn't think bringing local government into the picture was gonna be a, one that I can make a judgment call on. Some programs that have been put together in the past, I'm just switching, programs that have been put together in the past have all been private programs with a manufacturer and maybe a sponsor.
I, I, I still think that for a relatively nominal amount of dollars in the whole scheme of things, if we had a public involvement, whatever that number is, even if it's five, six, seven grand, and people are credited for the first, you know, the first year to roll it out, you know, brings attention to it, incentivize people, it's doing, for lack of a better term, the right thing, because that's what we want them to do. So it's not just getting twenty percent off of a new machine that you don't need, because you just bought one two years ago, and you don't wanna do that. But now if you're also getting that incentive of making up the number twenty percent off at another fifty dollars, it just, it's, it's doing the right thing.
I, I would love to have the public involved, I just wasn't gonna make it.
Uh, I don't, are we allowed to do that, isn't that, then using public funds for private individuals to purchase their own equipment?
That's why I wasn't gonna make it. So.
Yeah, so we, we researched that issue, because that was a concern I'd raised initially. I know California does approve some of their air quality review boards. We've spoken with some municipal organizations, New York State Conference of Mayors. Their opinion is, and ours is, well, is that if you, the town board finds that it furthers a legitimate public purpose, one of your goals here with noise, air emission reduction, that you could then use that and would be a valid expenditure of public funds, if you find that.
I personally, I mean, Jer- Jeremy's idea was always to encourage people to trade in their old equipment for new equipment. I think it's a great idea. I personally would rather spend our money, though, with some sort of green landscaper certification program and leave it to the private industry to offer discounts. Like Austining Mower said, that if he gets, you know, there's certain times of the year, he can put together a program, he can give discounts and pass along to customers. We could even have something at the farmer's market, you know, aside from the farmer's market, bring in a couple of manufacturers. We can maybe work with Chapagor Hardware and do something with them. So I, I do think we should be involved, but I don't necessarily wanna start buying back people's, you know, leaf blowers personally.
And that's why I didn't pull the public component into it. Just out of a side note, so that one town worked with their local bank to do a low, very low cost loan program so people can trade them in. Just out of a side note, so that one town, um, worked with their local bank to do a low, very low cost loan program, so people can trade them in as well as get a incented, uh, incentivized loan. Um, also talk to some of the banks in town, I don't know if they're local anymore, but maybe somebody would raise their hand and say yes. So the second thing we want, if I can move off of that, the second thing we, because I did say I was gonna make this short, I'm not staying short. The second thing that I, that we, we, what we're gonna be doing is create an education program in English and Spanish for landscapers and residents to, to inform about the new legislation and inform them about some of the healthy, green landscaping practices. I've had conversations with Newcastle Healthy Yards and Newcastle Pollinator Pathway Coalition, they would love to be part of it. We would need to obviously work out the, the details. I'm not committing them to anything, but I would entertain bringing them into an education program if they so desire.
And what Austining has at, at Austining Mowers is they have a handout at the counter, what is in English and what is in Spanish for the landscapers, because most of the landscapers do go there, our town as well as
And then the last part of it is to, as, as Robbie said before, to establish a green landscaper certification program, to basically put the stamp on a landscaper saying that they are following some voluntary requirements that have been established to be green landscapers, to be certified. And to put that as a referral list on the website and the like, so somebody looking for a landscaper in town that would be green landscaper certified has a place to go and find it. So that's a short summary of the implementation plan. Uh, once we get to the point of our next steps where legislation's approved, we will then start to organize the trade-in program, develop some trade-in seminars and explore certification process. And that is the end of my presentation. Any other questions? Is it down?
Let's see, I'll go on. Does any town board members wanna say anything before we open it up for public comment? We have to let us open the public, we didn't really open the public hearing, have we?
No, we haven't.
We should now. There's a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, everything you said, you have to repeat.
This time it's gonna take a half an hour.
Whatever. Let's just move that with spice. So, um, public comment? We don't have any index cards or anything.
Give them to sign up, no one signs, yeah, I'll give them to sign up.
Shout it out.
Yeah, sign up sheets, but they're all signed up.
Let's just go.
Yeah, no one is, this one is
Do it one by row?
This one with the
Whoever raises their hands. Do you have a pick first? Who raises their hand first?
No.
Thanks, thanks.
Roll plank.
Roll plank.
You'll be next.
Thank you.
Uh, two technical, sort of technical, uh, points here. One is this, I think the seventy DVA limit in the summer makes a lot of sense. We've, we've been trying to move to quieter, cleaner equipment and that, that sort of gets us in that direction. I think in the fall, it's actually gonna make the problem worse. What it effectively does is it gets, it, it bans all of the push behind blowers, which, which, uh, one, well, there, there are, you know, um, most of those push behind blowers are eighty DBs or more, which someone said that they're too allowed to be used anyway. The commercial ones. But they do the work of, that's one engine essentially doing the work of, you know, four to six or more blowers. Uh, they, they're very efficient at cleaning property, so the fear, it, you know, and has to be some analysis done around it, is that you have one push behind blower that can do a job in, in, you know, half an hour. It might take now hours for somebody with their backpack blower, or you may have landscapers that are using, you know, six backpack blowers at the same time. So I think that DVA limit has to be sort of looked at a little bit more and asked, you know, really look to see what landscapers are using or what they could use in the push behind market. The second is on the, the ten acre issue. I think it was, it was mentioned before, but it wasn't really talked about, was the, that ten acre exemption now opens up, um, really an exemption for thousands of town residents and really a big percentage of the land in town. Not because a lot of people have ten acre properties, but they, there's a lot of, um, sort of these condo jointly owned properties with open space that would fall now within like old farm lakes, and I think that, that, um, that was one of the environments I think folks in the initial comments were very concerned about. In a, in a densely populated or, or housed area like old farm lakes, you have condos that are close together, you have, you know, they have ten acres of open space, but then they would be using that mid and around those residential units. So I think that, that ten acre limit needs to be looked at a little bit more. The, the exemptions, there's a few towns, I think in the county that have those acreage type limits or exemptions. Bedford has, has one and theirs is, is a very different one, so I think, I know you, we've talked about that before, Rand.
What's Bedford's?
There's, there's exempts just the hamlets, uh, or bans, uh, leaf blowers in the summer just in hamlet districts with the idea that you have an eighth of an acre parcel. You have fifty houses in fact, or twenty houses. I don't know if there was any analysis that went into deciding how you get to ten, or is it five, or is it two? But it may be, um, if you look at those parcels, um, it's essentially a, you know, on a, on a typical parcel that's two acres, can you blow on that parcel and still be within fifty feet of, or a hundred feet of your neighbor's property? Depending, I mean, every parcel in town is gonna be different, but I think some, some thinking behind how you get to that threshold needs to be, you know, needs to be some analysis around that and really looking at the parcels in the town. Uh, this ten acre seem, seem, you know, seem relatively arbitrary unless you, you know, you, you had some thinking behind it. I know it exempts the school properties except for Bell School. It, it would exempt, you know, a lot of commercial properties like golf course, you know, um,
Cemeteries.
But not in some, I think, I don't know if it does all cemeteries, um, there's a little cemetery by, by the quicker, but, um, the other, like places like, uh, Birchwood or, or others, uh, that, uh, facilities that have sports courts that are under ten acres then may have those, those safety issues that were raised around the sports court. So I, so I, you know, it's, you know, again, the, I think some analysis around that ten acres is important as well as the seventy decibel. Um, and, and lastly, the, the wording of the law, I know your summary said it was gonna be seventy decibels based on industry standard. The law is, is worded as operating at seventy decibels, which there isn't a leaf blower in the world that, that, if you, if you're measuring right at the, at the unit itself would be greater than seventy decibels, so I think the fifty foot standard, you mentioned it, Rand, so I think it's just a, a technical definition for the law.
I believe there is a stand, an ANC standard which will define that.
Yeah, the fifty, yeah, exactly, okay.
Just one second, he was, told me to go next.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Last public area I stood before, it felt I was being severely discriminated against as a local, small property owner that does his own landscaping and been doing so for about thirty-four years. I find it very honestly disgraceful that we're getting, getting exemptions for all these different properties, allowing them to use gas blowers all day long, seven days a week, and I can't use my gas blower for fifteen, twenty minutes a week? Actually, Mr. Smith came by, Mr. Smith, correct, came by my house, I was talking to him about it, and he saw my little piece of property. I blow my walkways, my steps and a little bit in the roadway, blow out my garage once in a while, and it makes absolutely no sense to me that I can't use mine for fifteen minutes, but an agency that's been given an exemption, whether it's ten acres or other agency, you can use this all day long from eight till eight, seven days a week, and I can't start mowing up, blow a few things and then leave and shut it down and walk away? It makes no sense to me. Uh, I will follow up on the email too, because I have a lot of stuff and I don't wanna take a lot of people's times, since we've been here for like three hours last meeting. I did ask at one point, there were a lot of questions asked of the SAB, I, I don't know if all of them have been answered. One was regarding this company that is a green landscaper, I think we'd still like to know who that is. I'd still like to know if any members of the SAB do a little landscaping or they have, have people coming in and do it themselves. And, and if they don't have their own, do their own landscaping, I'm not really concerned that, why weren't the landscapers and the local homeowners brought in initially to, uh, to formulate this whole ordinance? I think they would have a lot to say from the beginning, uh, especially some of the landscapers that have been here and made some really good comments, including Vinnie from Austining Mowers, who, I buy all my stuff from him and he's extremely educational, informing everybody what's going on. The last point I'd like to know is, we keep on reading this thing about a hundred and thirty some odd tons of CO emissions, what is that based on? Maybe somebody can tell me what is that statistic based on? Is it based on previous EPA two thousand and seven ordinance? Is it based on all the modern equipment? Because Vinnie, as Vinnie said, the modern equipment emits less emissions, is quieter, and they're changing their backpack blowers every couple of years. So I, I'd like some of those questions answered some point, maybe somebody can email us.
Well, we did, we did consult with Vinnie. I don't know if he's here or not.
Yeah, he's in the back.
Hey, Vinnie, hey, Vinnie.
But, but can I just say the calculations for the, for the carbon emissions are in the SAB report, it's a major report. They're all laid out there, all the calculations are presented.
It's quite like the Mueller report, you gotta read it.
They came, they're all cited, everything in this report.
Next.
Barry, I just wanna say something. Um, I know your property is lovely, it's very well maintained. You could do that very effectively with an electric blower. I have one and
Your property's a lot bigger than mine.
Yeah, and I use it and it's great, and, you know, it works.
And I'm sure the board's gonna buy me a brand new one.
They're not that expensive. I got one at Home Depot and it's, it's
Same.
Where Austining Mowers is.
Well, I've got two acres, so
Tom, Tom was next.
Electric blower.
It works. They're not that much.
Tom, you just gotta speak up.
I was gonna do a bunch of backpack blowers.
I'm patient.
You'll never get a word in
So our next, our next year, you go.
How good at bellowing.
Here we go.
Sure you are.
Really encouraged with the idea of having a, a, a greenscaper. I, I even like the, uh, the cliche, I like to phrase it. I'd like to discuss that with you, you know, when we can, we can powwow.
Love to.
Re-retracting back to decimals, uh, our topography here is so varied that this is something that could be addressed in a training program for both homeowners and commercial individuals that do business in the town. Bad maintenance practices. Now, I've been coming, visiting with everyone here since November and, uh, you know, it's, it's guys blowing grass in the street, you know, two big nine horsepower blowers on a postage stamped piece of property, not necessary. But, you know, and, and to, and, and contrary to that, you know, we have a lot of, uh, non-indigenous pathogens that are invading our area and it's, it's ongoing. Anthracnose with ash trees, our crab apples are losing leaves the first few humid days of the summer, and that could be mid-June, you know, up until July first. I mean, I, I've been seeing this, you know, so, uh, you can't always clean it up with an electric blower. So, you know, if the door is open a little bit, you know, for, for, you know, some of us professionals can give feedback. Uh, I mean, I could even bring in, you know, I, I, I work very closely with Cornell, but if you want someone that's getting a check from Cornell, I can make that happen as well. But, uh, you know, these, these things really should be considered. You know, I, I'm moving forward, I, I, I brought in a lot of information on lithium battery and if, if you're gonna be kind of descending of that, please just put up a warning. You know, there's so much going on with these things, it's negative. You know, the DOT doesn't like it, OSHA doesn't like it. I mean, there's so much medical documentation about these lithium batteries. You know, they're not a healthy thing. They have, uh, temperature tolerances. Uh, I've seen the way, you know, people care for their equipment, both homeowners and contractors. And I could just imagine one of these, uh, handheld blowers in the back of a truck on a ninety degree day, that, that bed is hot with metal or, or a bed liner and it's gonna crack, and now you've got a, a liquid fuel fire along with a, a lithium fire, it's gonna be a mess. You know, maybe we could, you know, by educating people, I think, you know, probably some of this stuff could be resolved. But, uh, I think that's, you know, the, the crux of what I'd like, I got a word in tonight, I'm very glad, so thank you.
Vinnie, what do you, I, I don't mean, Vinnie, I don't mean to put you down, but you should come in and sit down.
Come on in, Vinnie. Sit on the floor.
The guy's got, the guy's got six daughters, let him sit down.
Yes.
Sound like Haven, yeah.
Good, how are you?
Good. What do you think of the seventy, seventy DVA?
Um, you know, I think the only one, when we looked that night, it was just steel that passed that, passed that seventy. I think everybody else, Red Max number seventy-two. So unfortunately, most landscapers have Red Max at this point in time right now, so that means they'll have to buy all new equipment again.
Well, if it's seventy-two, we, we go up to seventy-five.
Yeah. Yeah, well, then, then you'll be fine.
Has that been an issue in Austining? Because my understanding is that in Austining, they require under sixty-five DVA?
The only thing they're doing in Austin right now, uh, I heard even today that they're doing a lot of warnings, they've, they've to, for the law, they've done warnings of just using a blower. They haven't really done the, I don't think, you know, issued any warnings about the DBAs, but just the use of power blowers, because they were very, most people didn't even know about the law. You know, that's why I had the, you know, the laws on my desk. So, um, you know, if you're gonna pass this, I would definitely make sure everybody knows about it because, you know, it's, it's, a lot of people in Austin did not know about it. And, you know, it just causes a lot of confusion.
The seventy-five is
Yeah, I would say go to seventy-five or eighty, you know, like you said, you know, power blowers in a fall. I mean, now, you know, you've seen that big blower that I had in front, now they have stand-on blowers that are thirty-five horsepower that can, you know, for large areas that can do, you know, a piece of property, you know, a lot quicker than having somebody with six backpack blowers on their back staying there for hours.
So what if, what if it was, I'm just hypothetically, throwing out hypotheticals, seventy-five for handhelds and eighty for the push blower?
Well, but, but, I mean, contrary to what we heard tonight, we did come up with seventy based on a rationale, so, you know, there is significant research that went into it.
I mean, we can, we could go back to the manufacturers and certainly get exact decibel rating, so you're, you're within.
We just don't wanna require something that, that we're not giving consumers a, a great choice.
No, we don't, yeah, we don't, yeah, again, we're trying to get, you know, with the, the trade-in, trade-ins and stuff we were talking about, we're trying to get, you know, a lot of the old stuff that, um, you know, off the streets and, and, you know, get into the same stuff, that's not as, uh, a little full.
But if, if we're saying it's seventy and the consumers only have one choice, that's not really
Yeah, no, I, I did have to go up a little bit. I did, let me just pass this, I did take this off Echo machines today, it's an air quality, uh, tag that's on there. So you can see that they are trying to work with having clean, clean equipment for the environment. So I didn't, I can pass that along. This is on echo blowers and trimmers and, you know, they're, they're two cycle lineup.
If somebody came in and said, oh, Newcastle, they just passed this regulation, I gotta buy new equipment, they'd be able to, anybody can identify the DVA, right? It's like a label on it, it all has the labels. I just wanted
It's right in the brochure. Most of them have a chart where the DBAs are.
The one, just the one you gave me.
It's their homework.
Which had multiple letters, seventy and other.
Right.
That is steel.
Victoria?
Vinnie, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So when you talk about the seventy-five and eighty DVA, are a lot of the older, more polluting machines at that level too, or are we only seeing newer ones?
No, they'll be, they'll be, they'll be higher.
How high are the?
I, I honestly, though, I'd be lying to you, I don't remember. But you could tell the difference, very whiny, very loud. You know, they're, they're, and they're, they're, the power of blowing is a lot smaller, so the new blowers have a lot more blowing power, so you can get the job done quicker, so you're off the property, you're, you're done with your work. For an older blower, like, you know, not to go against her, but she's saying she has electric blower, how long does it take you to do your property with electric blower?
I don't do it.
You don't do it?
No, there's no point. The guy comes with a mulching blade, right?
No, but you asked, you said you did your, your lawn with an electric blower?
Well, I, I bought an electric blower and quite honestly, I don't really use it. I bought it for the deck.
Okay.
But you know what?
But if you went to do your lawn, you'd be there all day.
I don't do my lawn though. I do, I do a mulching and the grass clippings fall into the lawn and they fertilize, but I'm saying
This, John, he did his lawn, an electric blower, it's like going out there with a hair dryer, you'd be there all day.
It's not really. I actually, actually, well, this is, I know, but you know what I found?
I mean, he's I sell it myself too.
I found I use the electric blower, I use the electric blower for the deck, that's what I bought it for, that's what I bought it for, but honestly, a push broom takes me less time than a blower.
Yeah, that, that's fine, that's fine.
Blower blows things, it's all disorganized, use the push broom.
Girl, you're rich.
You know, I, I was
We could.
I guess I'm just hyper vigilant about the DBAs, because I, you know, went to look at what causes hearing loss, you know, as you go up further.
Right. Right.
And it seemed, you know, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I guess if one of our goals is to really minimize that
Yeah.
and to encourage people, you know, is there really only one op, I hear what you're saying about one option, like are there other options that you could bring in to be selling? That would be at that seventy?
No, we, there, most of the companies are, their goal is to get to that seventy, seventy-two. I mean,
So with seventy-two?
The one, the one that we sell the most of is that seventy-two.
Okay, so
And, and you heard the, the battery backpack blower, was that quiet?
What, what? Yeah.
You guys remember the battery backpack blower, was that quiet or was that very loud?
Loud, I think.
That was very loud, right?
I got it right.
Again, so we don't want it to slip through your roof, just sort of thing like seventy-two is practical.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, that, then we don't have to go all the way up to eighty, you know.
And then you have a choice if you really, you, you know, Echo makes these super quiet ones that are sixty-five.
So the seventy-two, and this is, I'm just technologically thinking that, so thank you for answering. So the number is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that fifty-foot distance from the actual machine?
I believe so, yeah.
In other words, it's not like a, what do you call, like a point of origin?
Right.
So the machine itself could be at a higher DVA. So the people who live in that house, or you know, twenty feet away or whatever, it could be higher than. I guess I'm just wondering why...
No, the machine itself would reflect what it looks like from a fifty-foot, what it sounds like from a fifty-foot district, distance. So the machine itself gets certified and then gets labeled according to the ANSI standard, which is to measure from a fifty-foot distance.
So in reality, the decibel level could be significantly higher than that at the point of, that point of origin. And we're not concerned about that?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
I mean, are we not, and Benny, everybody, are we not concerned about that? In other words, wouldn't it be that you would want the point of origin to be seventy-two and then having...
There's not gonna be a blower to say...
Yeah, you're not gonna think that.
Right, we have to blow ourselves to death.
That's why we always recommend here with them, most, most of our people. Yeah, I mean, that's the big thing.
I've never seen anyone wear, I have to say, I've lived here for eleven years, I've never, ever sung, have I ever seen anyone wear? And I'm not looking all over.
Then come by my house because when I use mine, I have your protection, not some of my children.
Maybe wearing some, maybe individual homeowners, but the, the guys who come... Anyway, thank you.
Benny?
I have a question. So are these from two different?
No, the ones who are blow, the ones who are trimmers, so they're, they're company and all.
Okay, so my, my question is, on one of them, it says, warning cancer and reproductive harm. Do, do electric blowers have that issue? Do you see these, use these labels on that?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so. I'd have to look.
All right, and, and, but, and tremmers, I assume this is the blower, or you don't, which is the blower?
That was, that was the blower, probably. I'll, I'll double check, I asked, I didn't see that. But I can pull, you guys can...
Can you keep that?
Put it on your blowers, the place nearby. Anybody else have any things about the ten-acre thing? I'm curious about the...
Not the ten-acre thing. I, I take care of just large properties. And my problem is I think it should be closer to five acres. I have a lot of large property. I have a thirty-acre, a sixty-acre, Riggins' old place. The Devo where you, where, where the school is, is twelve acres.
Not my house.
The Devo place, okay, so I do large places. If I had to go to these, these backpacks, I would have to buy either twelve batteries or just buy, you know, maybe six, but leave my truck running on a property for three hours while they're charging because I'm gonna need all these batteries, and that's, that's crazy.
Why do you, what are you blowing? In some ways, just because you're a hardscape, right?
The, the state requires me to blow all hard, hard, have you, tell them how Riggins' drive by please. From here to Langsdaley, okay? And back, yes, if it gets grass on it, when I do fertilization, it gets fertilizer on it, has to be blown off, it's state law. Okay? You're asking me to run my truck for three hours so I can apply to the state law, that's crazy.
Well, the state law is like, fertilizers, not grass.
That is the top of the line. If you steal PTA one hundred with an AR three thousand backpack, Benny will say, we'll go for ninety to a hundred thirty minutes on charge. Okay? You're gonna tell me there's not enough time to do a driveway, even a long driveway? It's gonna take you longer than an hour and a half.
It comes from ninety minutes?
That's, that's what they're...
But what they say, it doesn't...
Means you have to have just hour on the time, it's not, you know, most of the time they don't.
Just for the battery.
Do you have any budget for that?
How much is the blow, Benny?
Yeah, we should all run out and buy one.
So twelve hundred dollars for backpack and one battery?
Yeah. And I leave my truck running still, it's charged the same battery, because if I do that driveway, I gotta go do the thirty-acre place next door.
I'd like to make a budget, town board, buy everyone that requests a backpack blower and an extra battery. What color? What color, what color you want, doesn't matter.
It seems crazy that I would have to leave the truck running all day to keep these batteries charged. Where am I helping the environment? I just don't understand that.
And I'll be the first to agree.
Because I do big places, okay? I get it, the half-acre place you could use a, a back, a battery one, I get it. Not the one that...
So the school district, which has large properties, has said that they are transitioning to electric, that they do not use, not transitioning, but they do not use the gas-powered leaf blowers around the classrooms. They said, unless I've remembered incorrectly, that they're using electric around the classrooms. So the hope would be in one case, this is the only thing I'm gonna say on the ten acres, is that, first of all, it's not a requirement that you use gas like, like you were saying at Old Farm Lake. If you live in Old Farm Lake and you don't want your HOA to use gas around your building, then maybe say, hopefully the homeowners will say something if they're exempt. But if this, you could in theory also use a combination of electric and gas on these larger properties.
The school, by the way, asked them their equipment, their, their equipment is at seventy-eight right now. But they understand that they may have to buy new equipment. I, I, I don't know if it's gas or electric, to be honest with you, it wouldn't make a difference with this legislation, it would have to be seventy.
No, I'm just curious if they...
I mean, it was gas that was being used the other day.
Around the classrooms?
It was, I mean, there are no students there, but it was in, I didn't, wasn't there the whole time, they were in the parking lot, which arguably is within the classroom.
Yes, but they had said to us that they were, your parents were, were saying that they were concerned about that and they said, we aren't using it around the classrooms, obviously, kids are in there.
Yeah, I don't know why.
So that might also be an alternative solution, if the school is using a hybrid approach to gas and electric, that might not be outrageous for other large properties to consider as well.
I mean, like, in my opinion, there's, there's no way to do the exemptions that truly feels fair. It feels like there's always gonna be an equity concern, whether it's taking the ten-acre approach or it's taking the approach of writing out the names of the individual people who have given the exemptions to. Or no exemptions. Well, I would like to see us move to a place where we're able to do no exemptions. And so that's actually why, when, when we were talking before, I was hoping we could get to that next slide because I feel like anything we do, we have to also complement it with the implementation side, which is all about the education and working with those who we've granted exemptions to to be able to move towards the better equipment in a phased way. So it's around the classrooms at first, and then, you know, that's successful, and then they branch out, and it's around the quad, and then it's around the field. So you know, I think we, I think we ultimately wanna get there. You know, my personal opinion is that, you know, having exemptions in place in the first version that we pass gives us some time to do this piece and then move towards a place where we don't have the exemptions.
And to give the industry...
What's the exemption process? Does anyone know? Do we have one?
What do you mean exemption process? They just want, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to worry about getting...
There's a bunch of exemptions, if a property owner or a homeowner association wants to apply for an exemption, is there a process to do?
I don't think there's a...
Sorry, did you miss the, did you miss the overview of the, the revisions to the legislation? So under the latest version that we're considering, any property that's ten...
The course that we took before.
Honestly, I didn't hear a lot of the comments, it's difficult.
I might need it, actually. The point is, under the latest version that we're considering, anything that's ten acres or larger would, would have the exemption.
But what I'm saying, if somebody doesn't have ten acres or is a homeowners association or condo association, it doesn't fall within the initial exemption, is there a process for them to apply?
No.
No, there is none.
No.
One exemption, you either fit it within it or you don't.
I mean, and if you got a ticket or something, then you would just, you know, you'd find, you didn't say it's a ten-acre lot or something like that, if it got to, if it came to that point.
Or you would not, you would say, whatever you're gonna say, but...
No, I'm, no, you have to prove it.
No, he wouldn't say it was a ten-acre lot.
No, you have to prove it. You have to prove that you have a ten-acre lot, if you got a ticket, I'm just saying.
Well, how about if I form a homeowners association, can we do that and just say, you know?
Yeah, you can give you that, really, yeah. And you have to join, you can't just form a homeowners association, you have to give your property to the farm. It's different, random farms is a homeowners association, but they all own their individual properties.
Right, it's a condominium, that makes sense, yeah.
So, I mean, listen, the exemptions, I, I don't even think it's a question of education, as I already said, I think that's one component. I think the problem is also that the equipment is just not where it needs to be, these electric blowers on these big lots. And I don't, like I said before, I don't personally care who owns the lot. It's the size of the lot, it's not the ownership of the lot. We're not giving exemptions to country clubs because, we like country clubs, we're giving exemptions to country clubs because it's a gigantic piece of property. And the same with schools and towns and, and some cemeteries.
But arguably, why do country clubs, for instance...
Is it golf courses?
But in, but this would exempt like Birchwood and other places that most of it's grass. Do they need, if maybe they need to blow the area directly around the pool, do they need to blow the area that's all the way in the backyard where people are just running around in a field? I, I, this is what kinda troubles me.
It may not be ten acres, it may not be... They have to blow the tennis courts, but it may not be ten acres anywhere.
I could sweep the tennis court.
But they don't.
I wanna make sure Karen's been patiently raising her hand, so...
Oh, I would, he would like, through me, he would like, he would like to just answer a question. He's a little nervous to ask, but he wanted to know why, when there's so many properties that have large amounts of woods, what was the purpose of having all of these leaf blowers, particularly in the summer, when there aren't any leaves on the ground?
Because people use them for, like, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Drew?
What?
Drew.
Drew?
Yeah, for, like, for the hardscape, but you'd be surprised, there, I, I have...
Explain what hardscape is.
Explain what a hardscape is.
Explain what hardscape means.
Okay, sidewalks, patios, tennis courts, anything steroids. Exactly. And, and I, I have never, in the summer, I don't blow grass, okay? I need my backpack, but I don't, I have machines that mulch. I don't blow grass, okay? I don't use them for, Benny, tell you, I've got walkers. When I have to pick it up, I pick it up with those. But you're still gonna leave a little bit when you do trim and stuff. And especially the problem is when we do applications. We get, you can't just fertilize and go right up to the edge. It's gonna get all over the sidewalks, it's gonna get on the patios. And state law says I have to blow them all. Now, if I have to go to these, you know, battery ones, I'm gonna have to leave my truck running the driveway all day. I only do big properties, they're all gigantic stuff. I got, I got another forty who pay for one in Bedford, but they allow me to use it, they, to that law. It's insane for me to run my truck all day, charging up all these batteries for, to comply with the state law when I do my applications. The board's gonna buy a generator. The rather ways to do things, but again, the same thing, so we're, we're gonna get a generator, we're gonna...
Okay.
Is that fertilizing it, whatever we need to do?
Yeah, fertilizer.
Okay, why do we not give a side conversation? Okay, we're ready to...
Are there any other comments that are not, I have a comment.
I was, I was gonna finish, but...
Trying to make you, but, okay, he was...
I was trying to forget me a little, I was here. What I was trying to say is, Chappaqua is very much a wooded area, very much is, so I'm saying, like, I don't really know how to phrase it, but like, the, the point of really like, cause like, I think, never mind, just go on.
No, go ahead.
I, I don't really, I don't really know. I don't know if I have a very good point, but I'll try. We live in a wooded area, basically. This is basically a big forest, Westchester, Chappaqua and large parts of Westchester are big forests. I just think leaves are something, ultimately, and with all the work everyone's doing, I think, oh, that eventually, it'll be something that, sorry. Well, it's just, I guess, I'll put it up with it because we do live in a wooded area. It's a forest. We live in basically a big forest. Yes, it's not, it's like we live on a beach, like, or...
So you're wondering why there is a need for that, right?
Yes.
And, and one of the reasons I think is in, that leaves some falling in the summer is because we're dealing with climate change, we're dealing with a climate crisis. I just got this this in the mail. This is to inform you of a pending pesticide application, which is why I asked, to neighboring property. You may wish to take precautions to minimize pesticides exposure to yourself, family member, pets, or family possessions. Close your doors, close your windows, keep the kids off the lawn, keep the granny in the house. And then blow the crap all over the place to me, to my other neighbor. How do we address situations? I mean, I understand, you know, you know, I know, but, but don't...
I do ground never. It's, it's not, I don't spray.
I know, but doesn't it get blown around that, this is low, yeah, ground never blows even more than that.
Yeah, but that's the morning, it's, it's from, it's fifteen years.
No, it goes into the air, it goes into the air, it goes into my property. I get cross, I get these from like every cross neighbor, so I don't have to do anything to my property because it's already in the process. Well, thank you for saving money, you know, I mean, so, there needs to be education, there needs to be awareness from all parties, everyone here, whether it's landscapers, or homeowners, or board members, or little on me, that we also have to look at the big picture, which I know we are, that you can't just plan for tomorrow, or six months, or a year. You're planning for ten, twenty, fifty years. That's what my professor Dennis Smith said in Wagner School, the first day of my class in public policy. If you're only gonna, if you're only gonna plan for tomorrow or next week and not ten, twenty, fifty years out, leave the room.
What year was that?
This was in the eighties, but it doesn't matter because it's true today.
He was five by one thousand and six.
Still true today, it doesn't matter, it's still true today. So the bottom line is, we need to do something, I know we're trying, we're trying to get everybody together to, to make a plan, and that's...
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, listen, we're gonna do something, it's just a question of what. And we're trying to do something, take it into the, the wisdom of the landscapers and, and Benny who owns and deals with the equipment, and, and, but we're trying to do something that's right for the environment and is workable and practical, and, and a year-round solution.
I think everybody wants a common sense approach, and I don't think there is room that doesn't. Whether you're a homeowner or a commercial, whatever, I think everybody wants a common sense approach that everybody can live with. As long as they're not picking out different people and kinda ramming it down to certain people's throats, you know, that's, that's all.
We're not, we're not picking out certain people, though, we're just dealing with the realities of the equipment. The electric equipment, the technology's just not there yet for some of these bigger lots, this is the reality. We're not trying to pick out specific people or properties, we're just trying to deal with the realities and situations.
Well, actually, Benny was saying twelve hundred dollars, the technology's there, right, Benny?
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's possible to do it, if I'm not out about it, you know, about, you know, backpack battery and, and a hand blower that'll go five, six hours, you know, we'd do, we'd do some of these property, but you know, will you make the investment? I don't know. You know, some people have in different towns, like, you know, Nershell has had this law. I think they're one of the first in Tarrytown, City Hollow. And you know, people are, you know, my landscaping customers are, they've no choice, they're gonna get the tickets. So they gotta do what they're doing, but most of them are fuming to spend the extra money to, to use for six months and you know, and the technology, it's, it's a quarter, the power's a quarter of what, you know, a gasoline blower will do. But it's, it's, you know, they're working on it, the technology's gonna be there, maybe four years from now, it'll be much better. I, I would think so, they're, I know Steel is working very hard in Germany. To, to, you know, most Europe is, has gone to robotic lawnmowers, they're going to a lot of battery equipment, so.
Lauren, you got a comment?
I actually have a question. So what is the timeline in the process for this? So the town board after this public hearing, what, what's your timeline as far as your decision-making process?
Well, you know, as, as much as we enjoy this...
I'm sure it makes this wrong.
Are you just asking how we pass legislation, or what?
But as far as this...
No, it's complicated.
This is a public...
This legislation, let me listen, we've had a number of public hearings, you know. I personally think that when we, we make major changes, we certainly should have a public hearing to get input, like we did this one. I mean, this public hearing's already scheduled. But you know, if we make other wholesale changes, I think we would have another public hearing. If we tweak this legislation, maybe, maybe we wouldn't, maybe we just leave it open for public comment, for written comments. I think we've heard everybody's position, we have to, at some point, the town board just needs to make a decision. We've heard everybody's comments, we've tried to, I mean, we've, we've had a number of revisions and they're, they're based on feedback. Not everybody likes the revisions, but we have actually been listening and trying to, you know. And I think the legislation is better, you know, addressing a year-round solution, I think is really, really important.
So I think in the next episode...
But, but hang on one second, I do think the town board, we have had many public hearings and we've heard many comments and there have been a lot of kind of side conversations, but the board itself has not sat down with the legislation and talked about all the comments. Things just get put into the legislation, I think from side meetings and things like that, but I, the board itself, we have not sat down to talk about the ten-acre restriction. We did not sit down to talk about any of this. It just came into the legislation, and in fact, someone from the SAB called me today trying to lobby it and I said, I do not like these one-off things, to me, it's very disingenuous and not transparent at all. I wanna sit down as a board and talk about the acreage restrictions, talk about everything else, not try to get buy-in from individual people and somehow the law gets changed and we have not, as a board, actually sat down and worked shop this law.
It's like an executive session, I think.
No, I'm saying...
The, the, what I, what I remember, what I specifically remember is that there's been, there was a lot of emails going forth at the town board.
there was no question that there's some disagreement among town board members about the exemptions, however, there were certain things that we did agree with, so we decided to put into legislation that we're dealing with here tonight, because to sit here and and to use old legislation that we sort of have progressed from, because that's really what it is, didn't make much sense, so yes, we did put in a ten acre thing, but we're not committed to that, we're hearing public feedback on it, and then the town board's gonna need to sit down, and at some point, make the hard decisions and vote, and we all may not agree on it, but at the end of the day, we're gonna pass some legislation, and some people are gonna be happy, and some people aren't, then we're gonna move on.
My point is, before the vote, to me, the next step should be, we need to sit down and get to
Of course.
taking all this in, and get to what we actually think the law should be, whether some of us agree and some of us don't, we should come to a consensus, and emails back and forth, I don't want emails back and forth, I wanna hear what Jeremy thinks, I wanna hear what Ivy thinks, I wanna hear what you think, all sitting down where we can hash out, because maybe you'll change my mind on something, or maybe I'll change your mind, and we can only do that together.
That will be the next step.
Work session on.
That will, that will be the next step, because public hearing is scheduled, so.
In a work session, you know. No, 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 I know, but Lauren asked next step.
Well, Drew.
Can I just make a radical suggestion, and perhaps I'm being a little bit naive, because as we see the exemptions today, the town of Newcastle is exempted from this, perhaps on a trial basis.
We're exempted from?
From the, they'll be from the.
From the, from using the electric blowers, three months a year, we're not exempted from using equipment that meets a certain decibel level.
No, but.
Nobody's exempted from that.
No, but the the town of Newcastle, you own over twelve hundred acres, I mean, that's not, but over twelve hundred, am I understanding that correctly?
When not, but.
Like, so it's a ten acre.
No, 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 no.
It'll be, it'll be based on, to par, rise of the parcel.
The parcel.
Sorry?
But certain, certain parcels would be exempt.
So it's a whole.
Okay.
People would.
Okay, I, that's that, okay, then.
You're correct.
But nobody, just so we're clear, nobody's exempted from the seventy or whatever it becomes seventy-two.
No, 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 the 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 town of Newcastle, like DPW, or whoever works and does the fields and all, they're exempted,
Always exempted from that. That's okay, that's okay.
Like, the the ball fields, Getney Park, is that all exempted? That's my understanding.
That's a, that would be exempted from the electric blowers, if it's ten acres or above, but not from the, not from the gas that meets seventy.
Well, if it's ten acres.
Okay, so my, I guess my suggestion is, is perhaps the town, because they have the the resources, could try this law out for a month and see what happens.
Well, we we, again, the the, the leaf blowing equipment has to be seventy dpa, but nobody's exempted from that. So when you say try it out for a month, we we, if we did it ourselves, we'd have to buy equipment that's seventy dpa grade, or seventy-two, whatever we decide, but the point is, that's, there's no exemptions for that, there's no exemptions for that, twelve months a year, if you're using a gas blower, you have to have, it has to be seventy or seventy-two.
I I, but I'm specifically talking about gas blowers, because the town is exempted from it.
We're not gonna buy a gas blower for a month.
We're not, we're not exempted.
We're not exempted from the seventy, we're not exempted from the seventy dpa.
She's saying the restriction here, where we're exempting ten acres or more.
Yes.
Or for electric.
For the use of gas, there, right.
We have, we have parks, we have areas of land or not.
But that exemption would not just be to the town, that would be fair.
It would apply to Getney Park, and and yes, it would, correct.
Yes, it would apply to the, to the soccer fields, to anything that is town hall, correct?
And to any other ten acre property.
Yes, yes.
Or if it's ten acres, if the soccer fields are more.
Yes, absolutely, that's what I'm suggesting, I'm just suggesting that if if the, if the, if the law holds, and it is, and it should be applicable to the residents, I I'm just saying, why not, to Lisa's point, I just don't understand these exemptions, that's it.
Okay.
But we'd be using.
But it is, the park isn't more than ten acres, if the soccer field on the park, or baseball field on the park, that's less than ten acres, it's not exempted.
Okay.
Like, rec field would not be exempted, because it's smaller than ten acres, so we would be using an electric field.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're using the smaller.
Okay, I I I have to be able to use gas blowers, because they're stronger for my paving, my, you know, uh.
Storms.
No, I don't think that, anyone's talking about that, of course.
Okay, that's all.
That's always exempted according to the whiteboard, right?
If there's paving, emergency, and, you know, that, you have to.
That's always exempted. But the town should use seventy dpa.
Until such a day that the dpa, that the power is enough to.
So Millwood Park would would, we wouldn't be exempted, Getney Park, we wouldn't be exempted, I don't know about the soccer field.
Getney, we would be exempted.
Getney, you would, that's.
I'm I'm sorry, I I meant, great, the rec field, Millwood Park, Amsterdam, I'm unclear, but I don't think two soccer fields are ten acres.
Probably not.
So, can I ask a question? Right, today's July sixteenth, it seemed to be pretty significant, I I know that there's a lot of work that's been done to date, but I do think it's very important, given that, you know, a lot of people are away in the summer months, that there's gonna be more public hearing on this, more public comment, I really think it should be, I'm not saying work should stop on this over the summer months, but I think you gotta wait till people come back from the summer and really continue to get the community's take on this. I just, I just worry that, um, you know, I don't know how many people.
We've had, we've had, we've had five public hearings.
I have thought.
It was our first, it was our first public hearing.
Well, that's fine, but you keep changing the legislation, it's a.
They, they, we've changed, we've changed the legislation based on the public comment that we received from the prior form of the law.
Remember, remember, was the first public hearing?
It's a vault, yeah.
It's developed, it's developed.
I mean, we're not, we're not doing it as a.
I I just don't think, so why don't we, really, the door's been wide open on this.
Yeah, so why don't we take the um, the thirtieth, our next town board meeting, next time we meet, to workshop it, and then work session.
Yeah.
Workshop.
Yep.
During work session.
For counseling on that family.
Yes, yes. Not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing, okay, and if you want, you can continue the public hearing to August thirteenth, and if we're not ready for something, at that point, we can adjourn it from there, but otherwise, that would be the next time.
Could we workshop and have a public hearing on it, on the thirtieth?
No.
Why not?
Because I think we need to workshop, and come up with what we want as our actual proposed legislation, and then that, we need to have time to get out to everybody, so they can look at it, and then come back for a public hearing.
It is, yeah, well, Michael, real quick, we just gotta, we gotta move on.
I didn't comment yet.
Not, not, I'm talking, I'm talking generally speaking, Jeremy has to leave at nine thirty, we got other stuff on agenda.
Okay. So.
And they have to drive about, and they have to drive about, it's hard as fuck.
No. No, it's right, it's right.
My comment was on something you guys haven't really talked about yet, was just real quick, on Sundays, it would seem to me that while the environmental suggestions are all great, um, that just quiet time would be nice, I would move that Sunday time from five o'clock to like two o'clock. Um, everybody should, Sunday should be done, and, you know, noon, one, two, and everyone should be able to be in their backyards,
I think it's four right now.
barbecuing, hanging out, playing ball, and we shouldn't have to hear anyone's, mowers or blowers or whatever, that would be my suggestion.
Well, Sundays till four, but I mean, there are people who work during the week and need that time on the weekends to do that work, but that's why it's ended in four.
Yeah.
No, no, it seems, it seems like the.
The reality, the reality is, you have, in the in the real world, you have a weekend to do stuff, you procrastinate on Saturday, and then you left do it on Sunday, you know?
Or you're doing stuff that you're required to do on Saturday with the kids, and that, you know, that's.
I think, I think, I think you should move to.
Yeah, so we need a motion to adjourn to August thirty.
All right, that's a question.
Second.
The second.
Well, favor, I, yeah, why do you want to say?
Yeah, just me, like, we just, I just wanted to ask a question.
Go ahead, sure.
Um, I just wanted to know, I saw there's education for the landscapers, and what I'm wondering about, just as a person who's been working farmer's market, giving information, people in town don't know, they don't know about, a lot of things about, that, yes, they don't have the clue, you're right, they, and and I feel like, I agree with you, because, I mean, I I had a picture of a clover, no adults could identify it, in a little game you're playing, or a dandelion, so, I mean, it's like, just on a simple level, like, I feel like there needs to be education for this town as well, the whole picture, like, from all sides, like, I understand the landscapers, I need the men to mow my lawn desperately, I can't do that all by myself, but at the same time, I have concerns about the environment, of course, and what's happening, I don't want that blow on my lawn, but that's my choice, so. Could we think about that, maybe?
No, absolutely.
Probably, definitely, yeah. Like the talk we had, that was so great.
We're gonna have education, no question about it.
And what I love about you making that suggestion is I know that you wanna help do it, too.
I love it, honestly. No, no, I know.
Then we want to move towards the certification, which I think is something that's very important, too, but we got, we're taking steps. Victoria, real quick, please.
Just quickly, yeah, I think the education piece will actually make a difference, because even as we're talking at the farmer's market, people realize that, yeah, and they also, they they realize that they can see mulching the leaves once they start coming.
They don't know.
If you consistently mulch them, then you really only may need one time, I mean, I rake onto a mat at the end and move it to the side, but you won't need to use heavy-duty leaf blowers, because you won't have that many leaves at the end of the fall, because you've been mulching the whole time. And also, as we learn about pesticides and fertilizers and plant control, there are a lot of harms that they cause, and so people may start opting as they become more aware, to not use as many of those products, and that may, you know, lead into this as well, so I think education will be, I think, a lot.
And. I'm sorry, it's inappropriate to jump in, but one of the landscaper, you, I think, I'm sorry, I don't know name, said about the um, the invasive plants, and that is a huge, huge problem, that we need to address, that people don't even know on their property, they may have in plants that are dangerous, or that are invasive, that could cause immense problems, so.
It would serve us all well if we bookmarked D E C dot gov, New York State, and there are updates by the moment of what's going on.
And they put out alerts, people may not even be aware.
So I think we we hate to cut off really good productive conversation, it's especially awesome when people who have differing viewpoints are able to sort of have this really great sort of cross-pollination and conversation, um, I wish you guys could all just go out together for a mere quicker hill, so we could have the rest of the meeting. Um, so we are gonna do, as we said, a work session on this and another public hearing, so, thanks, everybody, for continuing to.
Okay.
So thank you.
Gotta be noted, let the record reflect. Okay.
Adoption, no.
Guys, if you're gonna talk, please just take it outside, so we can continue, thank you.
Take care, Vinnie, thank you.
Please, take it outside, please, thank you very much, we're happy to have you continue the conversation at last, thank you.
So, um, I think the only reason why the plans on local law was being held open was to just answer the rest questions, that would be, I can't pursue it there, so. We just need a motion.
Somebody left a computer here, it's ours.
It's ours, thank you. Does anybody have any, um, public comment on the, uh, local law, anybody want?
Is the motion open for public hearing?
Yes, it already did.
It already did, yes.
Yes, yes.
Great, any comments on the wetlands, local law? Hearing none, is there a motion to close? So, so moved?
Second.
Well, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public hearing for the, opening these, right?
Yes.
King Greeley Sanitary Sewer District, motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You should explain this one.
So, um, this is a parcel of property with a failing septic system, in order for them to, to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna talk a little louder.
Yeah, so this is a public hearing on a petition from a resident of one sixty South Bedford Road, or petition to expand the sewer district so that they can connect their failing septic system to the, use the sanitary sewer system to the town sewer district.
I'm sorry, is it for one sixty Bedford Road, or is that the address of the applicant, but she's a architect who's applying on behalf of thirty-three?
No, 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 that's her.
No, that's, that's her property.
Oh, so the thirty-three Aldridge, is it a different issue?
I I believe you.
No, the improvements are gonna be located on thirty-three Aldridge.
Wait, she needed a, um.
Joe, I gotta keep that open.
I closed.
No, it must be open, John, no, 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 John, oh, open all the way, sorry.
So the sewer line is not on South Bedford Road, she has to go through property that hasn't, she has to ease no around thirty-three Aldridge
I see.
to connect to her house on one sixty South Bedford Road.
South, okay, that works, yep, got it.
Very complicated, sorry.
So all the improvements, all the work we've done at her expense, the pipe itself will be maintained at her expense, it's just allowing her to connect her service line, which extends from a little private property, to the town's main. Public hearing notice was mailed to the controller as required, as well as published, so it opened with public hearing.
Is that, and that increases her taxes?
She's already in the county sewer district, so it will, she was already paying a county sewer district tax, but she will now be part of a local sewer district and paying those sewer district fees.
Okay.
Plus the cost of the.
Yeah, yeah.
And in your package is a diagram showing the proposed easement area with connection from the main to her house.
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
Okay.
But I, I, so, just so that the board understands, one of the reasons why the county is so stringent about their regulations when it comes to oversized parcels, is because if your septic system fails, you need to be able to do something, like connect to the sewer district, if you're opting out, you have a sewer district to connect to.
Right, right.
So there's, you know, there's a method behind it.
Behind their madness, yeah.
Okay, well, so any public comment on this, uh, uh, public hearing? Motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one, this is a proposed snow removal and salvage repairs, local law to amend, chapter one eleven, the technical concerning concerning snow removal and salvage repairs.
To open the public hearing?
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So basically, this one is, what are we talking about?
So this is modifications to our, our snow removal ordinance, so that we've reduced it from, what, to twenty-four hours?
Twenty-four hours, too long.
To six.
Too long.
It's, it's.
And we also included the provisions from the town to be able to clear the property, to clear the walkways on behalf of residents or property owners who fail to do so within the six hours, and then the town does that, they would send an invoice for the time that the town expected doing that.
Right, and there are, of course, exempted hours between ten P M and six A M.
Right. And after a certain period after a snowfall, so not the, the climate.
Right, and this local law's been worked up several times as well as the subject of at least two or three public hearings previously, we were just working on the number of hours they had to, um, clean the snow.
Okay.
Any comments?
Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okey dokeys, move right along.
Uh, then notification, uh, Gray asked that we adjourn this until the thirtieth, so that it could be.
Okay. So you just need to open it, see if there are comments, and.
So moved.
Well, in favor?
No.
Second.
Second, to a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The uh, the thirtieth of July.
Right, any public, any public comments?
I moved to adjourn the public hearing.
First, any comments and comments?
No.
I moved to adjourn the public hearing till, uh, July thirtieth.
Where's John's statement?
I don't know.
You have a comment, or you're just standing?
No, public, I'm waiting for public comment.
Oh, okay, all right, fine.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Want to go to the resolution before you public comment? Let me go to the resolution, because we have.
Are you serious?
I got phones, I'm sorry, I got, I got phones, I'm sorry.
You were joking.
We're gonna keep him standing, but that makes sense.
We have three of us. Is there something you want to add?
Just how much I want, I want to love you guys.
He just, he just wants to make sure that, that, uh.
It's nine thirty-nine, you can leave now. All right, so John, you want to do your public comment?
Um, we just, we've heard a very lengthy discussion, uh, leaf blowers are a subject of, uh, more than a bit of hot air, excuse me, uh, but what we, what we really need to deal with in this is, uh, the.
Whoa, wow, wow, oh my goodness. Terrific.
Woo.
You all gonna take your seat, I can do.
I think he tried that one. Um, so, a couple of things, you can have the best law in the world, you can have the worst law in the world, it's always a subject of enforcement. And we're talking about leaf blowers and other things, how are people going to enforce this law is going to be determinative as to whether the law will or will not work. So, all I'm asking is that, um, some thought be given to the enforcement decision, decisions and the way it's done, it's going to be just as important as to what the law is. Now, it's one thing if you slap a ticket on a windshield, it's another thing to put it in somebody's hand, and which is gonna increase a little, you know, disagreement by definition, um, if you're going to mail a summons to a house, you know, for violating this, um, the way that you enforce this law, whatever it ends up being, is going to be really, really crucial.[1723.81] So, um, I just wanted to, to, to bring up that point. Second, at the Discussion Planning Board, I brought up a very great concern I had concerning the ability of people who work at Whole Foods. They close, they leave at 10 o'clock at night, they walk home. I frequently am coming home at that time. I would hate to hit anybody. They have to walk a ridiculous amount of time to catch a, catch a train. They do not have any way or provision to get these folks to the, to, to the train station. Seems to me, if I were the manager of the Whole Foods, I would drive them myself, but that's the kind of a manager I am. I don't think that they do it, and I wouldn't see so many people, and I am deathly afraid that one of these folks is going to get hurt.
You see them, too.
Walking. So I wanted to bring that up. It's a matter, I did speak about this in front of the Planning Board. I think it's a major concern for, for the town, and it's just something that, that I would want to do as a human being for another human being.
John, if I may, I think there's a potential solution there, which is that the town is soon to, finally, start its electric shuttle program, uh, which will actually be run by.
It can be gas-powered, that's fine.
Just going to join on.
The hours, exactly, so the hours of the electric shuttle, as determined by the agreement with Summit Greenfield, are limited to a set number of hours that ends, I think, at 7:00 p.m. every night. So it's, it's pegged to rush hour for primarily residents who are living up at Chapel Creek Crossing, who are then taking the train.
Yeah, but that is, that's.
But my, what I was going to suggest is that if this is an issue that you're concerned about, if this is an issue that we're all concerned about, a simple solution, and one that Summit Greenfield is happy to entertain, would be to have Whole Foods come on as a partner and to fund extended hours for that electric shuttle.
Extended to 11 o'clock?
Exactly.
Well, one way.
And we have, we have asked numerous times, and they have yet to make any sort of.
Well, here's my point.
Steps in that direction.
Here's my point.
Would be great if folks like you would also reach out to Whole Foods and make that request.
Just ordinance it and said they are responsible for getting their employees.
We can't, we can't do that. We can't, it's a little long, the regulating how employers going to transport their employees.
What, what we could do, their, their position is.
There are ways of wording this that would make it legal. There are ways of doing it. And I'll give you a little, some law, whose language if you want.
Sure.
And I'm not even, I'm not even an attorney on this.
What you could, what you could do, though, seriously, is that what the Whole Foods position is that they, they feel they don't have that many employees that are working. That is contrary to what other people's, um, what they're seeing.
Yeah.
Observations. So if you see people walking, you know, you should take note of it or take a picture or something. But the other thing I would say is, but the other thing I would say is that you do live very close to Whole Foods, and you could put out a notice that they can come by your house, and you'd be happy to drive them to the train.
Absolutely, no, no, I'm just going to ask the school district to use a school bus, uh, to take them, since they've got the leaf blowers going and all of that stuff, uh, behind their house. You know, we, they're spending so much on school buses, why not? No, all kidding aside, uh, we've got to, all we need is one disaster, and it, it's, it'd just be, to me, horrible, maybe it's because I care about people, but I do, and I don't want anybody to get hurt. So, so that.
The third. Preaching to the choir.
I'm not preaching, it's not Sunday. The other thing that I wanted to do was to just follow up and see what we're doing in terms of my favorite Performing Arts Center, and how, how we're getting events there and stuff there and meetings there. Certainly, when you do leaf blower legislation, I'm sure you could use the Performing Arts Center, since you own it now. But the, the whole, no, all kidding aside, we went concerts, it's an opposite of opportunity for music. I just came back from Tanglewood, and I wanted to see how they handled and how they managed their, their performing arts. And they've now increased it, now they've created three new venues to do it. One of their venues is, is similar but different, a little smaller, and it's a rectangular venue. A new hall that they built there. Music is, is calming, soothing, makes the town feel better about itself. And I want to move forward as much as possible and encourage as much as possible use of our wonderful new facility and to, to move this process along and not, not let the town forget that Chapel Creek Performing Arts Center would be a very, very effective venue for a lot of things, including restaurants.
So, John, the town has not forgotten about Chapac? We meet every other week about that. The Friends group, we don't have much booked over the summer because frankly, we don't have people who will show up. I mean, a lot of people leave for the summer.
A lot of people came, a lot of people came to Tanglewood.
Yeah, okay, well, we're not quite in Tanglewood yet.
And I can tell you, they got a lot of people that.
And a lot of people come to our summer concerts.
It's not, it's not just, it's not just the shed, it's.
Okay, John, if I could finish speaking.
I understand.
Um, we have our Friends of Chapel Creek Performing Arts Center is busy with fundraisers and other programs that are planned. We actually have significant amount of programs booked up already for the fall, and we are starting to look at spring. We have people coming in who want to book shows. We just obviously do not have quite the funding that Tanglewood might have, or quite the following, but we are working our way there. And we would be happy to have you come to meetings and also to join the Friends of the Chapel Creek Performing Arts Center.
I always will, I always do it, probably running check, but the point is.
Which is responsible. Which is responsible for fundraising and significant programs.
Should I, should I call my, should I call my buddy Lenny Bernstein and see if we can.
Why, yes, you should.
You can develop that.
Yes, you should. Why don't you call Michelle Gregson, who's the chair of the Friends of the Chapel Creek Performing Arts Center, and they're in charge of fundraising since the town can't fundraise.
It's not a matter of fundraising, it's a matter of programming.
Okay, so.
Well, you need the funds for the program.
Right, exactly.
I raised more money than.
That's great, that's why we wind you on the committee.
I got a million dollars, puts it in that way, I got $750,000.
I know, John, you're amazing at it, so please join the Friends group and help them.
And do it for, no, because I'm not going to, anyway, let's, let's at least solve the not killing anybody from Whole Foods.
Thanks.
Deal.
Okay, we ready for a resolution?
Yes, we are, so.
I move to approve the payment of claims, the amount of $827,302.29, listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail report. Each prepared on July 16th, 2019. Checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, July 17th of this year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to accept the following monthly reports for June 2019. Town clerk, court clerk, development department, and receiver of taxes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to pass a resolution granting a fourth extension of time to complete improvements pursuant to Town Code, Section 60D-430M. Do I need to read all these ideas?
Done.
Well, you can summarize and go through the results.
Now therefore be resolved, that the town board finds that Conifer has been a reasonably, has been reasonably diligent insofar as completing the project, and there are no changed circumstances that would warrant consideration of the special permit, and be further resolved at the time period as set forth in Town Code, uh, as referenced before, is applicable to this project and is extended 18 months from the date of adoption of this resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I move to authorize the Sawmill River Audubon to use the town hall parking lot from September 27th to September 30th to facilitate their annual Audubon purchase sale.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to accept the.
Well, I'm sorry, um, we're actually not doing this one. Pardon, the judge just came back to me and told me that they spoke to, um, Consolidated Daylight Grant Administration, and the planning grant that we were planning on, um, applying for is a townwide planning, not a single planning project? So that we're not eligible for it. They told us that next year we'll be eligible for it, and we should.
Okay, all right, so I move to declare the following equipment surplus and authorize placing these items up for auction at a 2005 Ford, 2008 GMC, and a 1999, whatever, International, thank you. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize acceptance of New York State funding for state fiscal year of 2019 to '20 through the extreme weather recovery reimbursements for local governments in the amount of $42,557.94.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve a request for a banner from the Friends of the Chapel Creek Performing Arts Center for the Battle of the Bands to be held Saturday, September 29th, uh, 21st, 2019 at 8:00 p.m. Banner to be displayed from September 3rd to September 21st, 2019.
That's at the Chapel Creek Performing Arts Center?
Yes, it is. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I move to adopt a local law to amend Chapter 60, Section 210, and Chapter 60, Section 410, and Chapter 60, Section 430 concerning wireless telecommunication facilities. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I move to adopt the Small Wireless Facility Design and Review Guideline Policy as attached to the, uh.
Well, to the general, attached to the minutes.
Okay, that's.
That's in the, in your general package, though.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I move to authorize entering into an agreement with Westchester County for the Stop DWI Program Grant for an amount not to ex, not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I move to authorize amendment D to the New York State Snow and Ice Agreement, Contract Number D014701 for these seasons, 2016 to '17, to file the 22.70 miles of the state roads within the town of Newcastle for an additional $18,438.46, for a total revenue of $55,537.98. 2016, '17.
Is that the. That's, that's why I was, I was so shocked it came in this far lately, but yeah, but that's literally why it came in tonight.
That's correct.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, let's take it. I move to authorize extending the current contract with the SCPA of Westchester through December 31st, 2019. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the reimbursement to Julia Golden for the full cost of tuition and books for a one-year job-related course for a total amount of $2,432.6. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to amend the fee schedule for special use permits, Section 60 dot 4300, as the following planning and zoning application fee will be $375 plus 75 per dwelling, or $25 per parking space, whichever is greater, and planning and zoning escrow deposit of $5,000, subject to $2,500 reduction by the building inspector and/or director of planning. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of Christopher Bracero as a part-time laborer within the recycling unit of the Department of Public Works, effective July 22nd of this year, at the rate of $15 per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I move to adopt a resolution approving the petition of Fadiya Moulas to extend the King Greeley Sewer District in the town of Newcastle.
No, we can just do the, the resolved.
And, uh. Be further resolved, it's a lot of resolve. And be further resolved that the town board in the town of Newcastle and the county of Westchester, that it be and hereby is determined as followed, the, aforesaid petition is signed and acknowledged as provided by the law, that the property and the property owners within the proposed extension of the sewer district are benefited thereby, that all of the property and property owners benefited are included within the proposed extension sewer district, that it is in the public interest to extend the sewer district, and that all costs relating to the extension of the sewer district, as shown on the map filed in the town on June 3rd of this year, describe the extension of the sewer district and the proposed improvements which shall be borne by the applicant, and therefore be further resolved, that the proposed improvements, including the cost of the right-of-way design costs, construction costs, inspection fees, legal fees, and other expenses, if any, should be paid for by the petitioners, and be further resolved that the town clerk is be and hereby be authorized to file a certified copy of this resolution within 10 days of its adoption or duplicate, uh, and also with the Office of the State Department of Audit and Control in Albany, and be further resolved that the town supervisors hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the purpose of this resolution on behalf of the town of Newcastle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, turn to the next one. Yeah, clearly.
Uh, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the supervisor sign agreement for the Curry Homes subdivision. There is an agreement that has been revised with subdivision maps, and now I hereby resolve that the town board approve the aforementioned agreement and authorize as the supervisor of the town of Newcastle to execute all documents that may be necessary for the purpose of recording agreement. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of Rocco Cipriano and Joe Sasso to the position of seasonal parks laborer, 0425-04, within the Recreation and Parks Department at a rate of $14 per hour, effective July 19th, 2019. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I move to accept the resignation of Kevin Gregson from the Recreation Committee, effective July 11th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You made the point, Brad, right?
I move to authorize Nick Cipriano and Robert Paterino to attend the Basics of Chainsaw Safety Seminar hosted by Rutgers University on Friday, September 20th, with a total cost of $390, $195 each, with the option of using a town the employee reimbursed for mileage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the Department of Public Works to solicit proposals for engineering services for the design of concrete pads above ground tanks and dispensing equipment, fueling station, and heating tank at PCW.
Second.
All in favor?
I can't be the only one who says aye.
I said aye.
Look at aye. Um, and there's a resolution authorizing the execution of a licensing agreement with SG Chapel Creek for the electric shuttle service, whereas we've been trying to get this agreement done for a very long time and, uh, with Summit Greenfield for the electric shuttle, and whereas we have finally all come to an agreement. And pursuant to the terms of the proposed shuttle agreement, SG shall remit to the town a one-time payment in the amount of $30,000, and thereafter operate the electric shuttle as described in the resolution, free of charge for the general public. Now therefore be it resolved, the town board hereby authorizes the town supervisor to execute the proposed electric shuttle agreement, and be a further resolved, the town administrators authorized to execute such additional documents as may be necessary to implement this resolution, subject to review and approval of the town attorney. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We had one that was missed. Can we read it, even though it's supposed to be before item 16? Is that the longest?
No.
No, not, and it's one for a posting.
Right, so it shows up on the agenda as number 16, but it's not in the resolution package.
Yeah, is that possible? So we have a thing for, um.
Where is it?
Is, is this the same, Christina? Is this for the same position? Come on, say what you think. The, it's for the posting? I don't, the higher, the higher is the general. It's very next. We can't tell you, we tell you, we kill you. And, and which position is it? Just the recycling, the parts that help the recycling. The one that we just approved.
The one we just did, number 16.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, can we do it as number 15, because it was that, it's shown on the agenda, but then it wasn't, didn't make it to the resolution packet. You can't post it. Because it didn't, didn't. Was it posted? I don't know.
Well, I was saying it was.
I come on to yourself. Not only everyone is supposed to be. It's fine, leave, leave it up.
Okay, so we need a resolution?
No, we're good.
Okay, terrific. Motion to, motion, it was fun. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry, no, 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 no.
No. We have additional.
Resolutions.
Resolutions that were, um, okay, so number 24, is that okay? I don't have copies, you could be.
No, I don't need them.
Yeah.
So these two?
Yes.
Authorization for the police chief's salary adjustment. Motion to authorize an adjustment to the salary for the chief of police to $166,000, effective retroactive June 28, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, here's an authorization for recreation superintendent salary adjustment. Uh, authorize an adjustment to the salary for the recreation superintendent to $130,000, effective July 22nd, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.